Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen. Today is November 3rd, and at 6:50, we're going to go into executive session for 10 minutes for two topics to review the October 6th executive session minutes, and those were regarding union personnel and collective bargaining, and then last week's executive session minutes, which had to do with the Weldner-Dutton civil rights case that's coming to fruition soon. So, there's a complete package of information for a couple more hours on regular session. So, when we come back at 7, we'll read the regular agenda. So, are those in favor of going into executive session?
Do I have to second it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Rewind.
We need a motion.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
To make a motion that we go into adjourn and go into executive session.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Road call, John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. So, we'll see you at close to 7 o'clock. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough's September 3rd.
November.
I'm sorry.
It's a good start.
Yeah, November 3rd, Foxborough Board of Selectmen meeting. We just came out of executive session. We had two items to review and approve the meeting minutes from October 2nd, I'm sorry, October 6th, which was the union collective bargaining meeting, and then last week's meeting on October 27th, which had to do with the Weldner-Dutton civil rights case, which is beginning this week. So, I'll read the agenda. At 7 o'clock, we'll do citizens' input, and anything that might not have come up in the last couple days, 48 hours in advance of this meeting. We'll give a selectmen's update at 7:05, followed by town manager Bill Keegan and myself will be discussing some action relative to the item of the Optum Lounge that's been going on for a few months now. At 7:25, we're going to be joined by members of the planning board, Planning Board topic, Chris Gallagher, the town engineer, and Gabby Jordan, to discuss a request to release funds from a bond, and that was for the Richard, I'm sorry, the Rothschild off of Sumner Street subdivision down there that's wrapping up. At 7:35, 7:45, and 7:55, we have three public hearings for NPS LLC. The first one is the public hearing regarding the alumni game over at the stadium. The second one is the winter classic, and the third one is for the Maya High School Super Bowl that happens at Gillette Stadium. At 8:05, discussion for a change of manager over at the Showcase Live. At 8:15, another change of manager request for the Cinema Deluxe. At 8:25, our police chief, O'Leary, will be discussing a constable policy. At 8:35, a change of ownership for the country store. At 8:45, town manager Bill Keegan will be revisiting the community compact discussions that we've had over the last meeting or so. At 8:55, we're going to close out the special town meeting warrant and discuss those items, and we have members of the advisory committee here as well. At 9:05, an item to discuss the town council policy, and at 9:15, Bill Keegan gives a town manager update, and then we have a whole bunch of action items in between. So, to start the meeting, Ginny, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for citizens' input? Nobody's seeing none. I wanted to give a quick selectmen's update. First, I wanted to thank the boards, a number of boards that got together last week, from the planning board, the selectmen, water and sewer, Route 1 Business.
Border Health.
Border Health. I think it was our third meeting to discuss what's going on at the town center, the town common, with respect to selling property and bringing sewer in that area. So, a few people have marching orders, and there's no date set for the next meeting, but I thought it was productive, and there's starting to be a lot of good sharing of information. So, thank you for all that attended on that. Just before that, just to update the town, I know it was in the newspaper today. We had an executive session meeting last week, and that was the Weldner-Dutton case, which has been going on for several years now on the civil rights, potential civil rights violations for protective custody. So, those hearings, starting this week, and the selectmen and the public safety and town management have been pretty involved in that, so we'll try to keep you updated on that. If anybody's not doing anything Thursday morning, in the morning, I think 10 o'clock, over at Memorial Hall, our little Civil War soldiers coming back?
That was 8 o'clock.
I'm sorry?
It's 8, yeah.
I think it starts at 8, but I think it begins at 8.
At the stage it probably is.
Yeah, but I think it's actually going to be put on at 10. I'll put it this way, show up at 8, because if you show up at 10 and miss it, I don't want to get yelled at.
You buying coffee?
Yeah, I'll buy the coffee. Yeah, 8 to 10. But, a special thanks to Jack. You know, you don't have to say Jack off the light anymore. It's just Jack. Him and his group over at the historic commission did some great work with that statue. Bill, I don't know if you have in your town manager update, but if you could, I know Ginny and you went to that meeting yesterday, the tour of Route 140.
I actually was going to just update the board as far as the course, and maybe I'll give it now.
Yeah. Oh, no, you can do it. I was going to say something, but if you could, that would be great. I also wanted to thank a lot of the board members from the different boards and committees in town. A lot of the residents came to our, if you want to call it a tour, with the Kraft Group, and thanks for the Kraft Group for setting it up last week. It was an opportunity to walk around the stadium for an hour and see all the things that have changed over the last couple of years, and I know it gave the board an opportunity. We were all there to kind of see the items and the changes and ask some good questions. So, and we talked about it at the end of the meeting to maybe have it a yearly event where new committee members, advisory committee, school committee, border health, all the people that came gets firsthand knowledge of all the different venues up there. So, I thought that was very helpful. And two last ones, and I know, I hope I don't sound like a broken record on this one, but I mentioned it last meeting. In January, the hope is to get a community-wide outreach for the people in town to talk about the heroin, opiate issue that's going on. It just seems to be getting worse and worse, and, you know, and I've been speaking to a lot of different people, and we're hoping to get good representation from our department heads to see where they are, what their feelings are on it, some community activists. I had a nice discussion again with our, for better use of the word, owner of Robert's Funeral Home, Undertaker, Margaret Roberts, and, you know, she basically said she hasn't seen anything like it, and it's getting worse. So, she said she would participate in that as well, and I know David reached out to some people in the profession to come. So, we're going to keep reminding you on January, and hopefully, there's a good showing from all of public safety and different people around the town. And then lastly, congratulations to the Foxborough High School Football Warriors. They're still undefeated. Kind of a side note, Thanksgiving game, this Thanksgiving's going to be in Foxborough, and it's going on our third year where we're reaching out to all the veterans in town. So, if you are a veteran or someone's in your family, we're going to try to provide you again tickets. We'll purchase tickets and a turkey before Thanksgiving, and a chance to get under a, you know, tent and have some coffee and donuts at the Thanksgiving game. So, we're starting to reach out. A little late this year, but if you're ambitious enough to donate, you can send a check in, and I know a couple of people did. In error, I said make it out to the town of Foxborough, but it shouldn't be the town. So, what checks we have will kind of fix that. But, if you can make it out to the Foxborough Touchdown Club, that would be great. So, and that's all I have. Does anyone else want to add something to anything that's been going on this week, last two weeks?
I actually just, I met with the residents of Gilmore and Fields Place last Thursday night, and probably talking about maybe putting something on the agenda next meeting or something to kind of come up with a plan that they all thought was doable, but some other concerns that we need to address too. So, but it was a good productive meeting.
How many folks were there?
About 20.
That's good.
Probably eight or 10 from each street. So, I let them all, you know, talk and discuss, and then we all just, as a group, come up with one plan that would appease everybody. So, preliminary results, sounds like Roger thinks we can do it. So, we just have to kind of discuss it and see if that's the route we want to go.
Nice.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. The next item at 7:10 is the discussion that we've been going back and forth on in the Optum Lounge with respect to the lease and where we are with that. Do you want to open it up, or I can take it from there?
Sure. And the board knows that we've been trying to figure out a way to resolve this matter for quite some time, and so we met this past week with the Kraft Group to talk about some possible resolutions, and then I think, you know, what's happened is that we've talked about some options, about coming to some compromise resolution and resolving it, and as of today, we actually think we've reached some middle ground on this whole discussion. So, I don't, you want to take it from there, Jim?
Yeah, I think it's, I think we'll open up for the board for a little discussion.
Okay.
And just in context for the, to refresh the board, and people know what we're talking about, back before the season started, the Kraft Organization came to us for a change in their liquor license, a modification for the Optum Lounge, and what it required was taking out somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 seats from the south end zone and replacing it with different types of seating that you would purchase if you're a season ticket holder. There's an extra step, and you'd purchase, and you'd have the right to go in there. So, when they came in front of us, the discussion was really around the liquor license and how the change in venue would affect their existing liquor license. So, kind of, there's two issues. One is the liquor license. That went forward. I don't think they were held up. They constructed it, and from what I see, it's working beautifully. The other issue is, in simple terms, the stadium does not pay taxes on the stadium proper area. So, what they have is what they call payment in lieu of taxes. So, the payment, instead of the flat taxes like most of us pay, is predicated on ticket sales. So, that lease was set up in 1990 or 2000, and it's a 30-year lease, so we're 15 years into it. So, when the modification of the liquor license came through, we said we would revisit the lease agreement, and it was as simple as we thought was, we'd do a spreadsheet and how many seats would be lost, times that dollar change to compensate for the taxes. So, if you've read the lease, I mean, it's pretty lengthy, half an inch. So, we reached out to our town council, Pat Costello, and we said, all right, read the lease, and are there money is owed, or is this something within the plus and minuses of the lease? So, he prepared something for the board that basically said, in his opinion as legal counsel, there is, there is a reason to believe that taxes or the payment should be made in some order for those tickets that were lost, for those seats that were lost. But, he also said there's a little bit of a gray area, and for the reason being, when this lease was drafted 15 years ago, the entertainment venue has changed quite a bit, you know, with respect to the turf field and the number of events that went, and it does, everything doesn't fit, and from time to time, our past boards have come up against that, and they've had an addendum to address some of the certain changes.
Essentially, the business model was different than it is today.
Yeah, yeah. So, 15 years later, I don't think they thought of the optimum and how that. So, Bill, myself, and Pat Costello, our attorney, met with them this week, and a couple of things that bothered me, not with the Kraft Group, but if this was ignored, we still have 15 years left on the lease. So, what happens next year, or five years or 10 years? So, one way or the other, I think our goal was to address it, to see where that change could be accommodated in the lease. So, you know, 10 people can look at this, and you could say we're penny wise and pound foolish, or we should stick to the lease, and, you know, it's a different thought process. Our position was, based on our town council, there's some monies due in recognition that it's a change of the lease. On the other side, and I don't want to speak for the Krafts, they kind of thought the opposite, that those type of changes were in effect addressed in the lease, and there was no more monies owed, but also wanted to recognize the fact that there is other ways to make money there with the meals tax and more venues and stuff. So, it was a decent professional discussion, but at the end of the day, we were on both ends of the sides on it. So, we had made an offer, and understanding the offer is not, I don't have the authority, and Bill doesn't have the authority, but an offer that if it was okay with them, we would bring it back to the table, was the money that we're talking is around $30,000 per season, plus or minus. The attorney fees and the aggravation and the loss of goodwill to go into litigation on this, if there was a way that we could compromise. So, what we put on the table was, if we split it down the middle, the town would come up with the 15,000, or not recognize that 15,000, and the Kraft Organization would pay the 15,000, and a little bit more than that on both sides. Wasn't accepted right away, and then from what I understand, yesterday, they came back and they said there is an opportunity to meet in the middle, and let's put this to bed one way or the other. Now, interesting thing, part of those discussions were, I think, and I don't think anyone's disputing the fact that the changes that they're making up there, whether it be the Optum Lounge or the Super Boxes, it's a phenomenal stadium and it's successful.
Right.
Is there a way that we could look at this lease again and have it realize some of these changes, so we're not doing this all the time, we're not doing it every month, with the understanding that if we want to change the lease, we have to go back to town meeting and physically change it, because it's a tax change? So, I wanted to have that discussion with the board, and my thought process is, I think what they're saying is, they'll come up with half the money, let's put it at bay until the end of the season, and between now and town meeting, is there a way we can work together to revisit the lease and maybe make it more lucrative for both sides, and at the same time, they shared a little bit of things that they wanted to do in that area, if we could make the process a little more streamlined, things like billboards and sewer and all that stuff, rather than going all places, have it addressed in the lease. So, when an event comes or more development comes, it's realized a little quicker for both sides, and some of the anxiety goes away. So, that's kind of where I left it with Bill and Pat Costello, and I wanted, I put it on the agenda to, you know, so our choices are, you know, we agree with Pat Costello, our attorney, and say we're going to go towards either mediation or litigation. We can split somewhere in the middle, and then wanted to get your thoughts on, is there any appetite to tie this into the lease in a broader perspective and work over the next six months to get that done?
Just the one thing I would add to that is that it's clear that the business model is changing, the business is evolving as time has moved on, and that there's a lot of competition involved with that venue, just as any other venue in the NFL and as any major stadium venue throughout the country. So, to the credit of the Kraft Group, they're evolving with the industry, and so they're looking at this as an opportunity that if we have to change, that means that the terms of the agreement that we've effectively put into place 15 years ago roughly, means that we may have to change that going forward so that the town continues to realize its financial gain, just as they do in the process. And so, we, knowing full well that we have to work cooperatively in order to achieve that, this is an opportunity to open that door, have a conversation, sort of, you know, help resolve the issue that we have outstanding right now in a sort of a middle ground, inserting in the fact that we're not 100% right, and we're not 100% right. And the thing that I, the point that I made during that discussion was that if we go to mediation, we'll probably end up in the same place anyways. So, by coming to this point in time with the resolution that's on the table, I think it's a good place for both of us, and I think it's good faith, it shows good faith on both sides if we're able to get there. So, I think, based on that, I think what's more important is that we get to the bigger discussion, and that is to look at the terms of the existing document, start looking at some of the ideas that they may have, looking into the future about what they'd like to do, and see how that meshes with the existing language, and see how we can make it work going forward for both sides. I continue to believe, just as I think Jim and the Kraft Group believe, that this is the beginning of an opportunity where I think we can actually continue to grow that business, just as we can, and both the town and the business can grow financially at the same time. So, I think it's an opportunity for us to really take a look, take a step back, look at it, and see if we can come to terms which makes sense for both sides.
So, with that being said, you guys want to spend a few minutes discussing and sharing thoughts?
Yeah. Oh, a number of weeks ago, I called Randy, and Randy talked to Bill Kessbar, and I just wanted to try to understand where the footprint of the town's land is. It'd be nice if there was a, you know, a white line painted so we know, but from what I understand, the Optum Lounge is actually, the hall of fame is actually on town land, yet we don't derive any benefit at all from it.
I mean, I think the, you're talking about the, the Cross Pavilion, Cross Pavilion.
And, you know, generally, when, the whole spirit of the payment in lieu of taxes was that if a big business venture was put on town land, just like the stadium was, that the town would somehow share in that appropriately, and I think those two items have been left out. And, you know, shame on previous boards for not pointing that out as they were being proven built. But, as far as the, you know, meeting them halfway, it's hard to look into the crystal ball and say, what does the future bring? Obviously, the business model has changed, but this is a, and I caution everybody, if we get this wrong, I think we're going to spiral out of control, because we're trying to understand what the business model will be in the future, and honestly, I don't know. It looks like it's, you know, more entertainment and less about football, more about hospitality and so on. So, when you read the lease, it speaks about getting revenue for people sitting in a seat, but it does have language which does say, by the way, and there can be other situations where you don't necessarily have to be sitting in a seat. And that's why I thought the town was in the right when we said, by the way, you've gone and changed the, you know, the footprint of the stadium, and you're selling, you know, the Optum Lounge a lot of money, and yet the first time we brought it up to the Krafts was, no. And I guess this afternoon, they called and said, by the way, we'll meet you halfway, because they knew we were going to talk about it tonight. But, it's, I'm glad we're talking. This is fantastic. I would just like to, you know, and I think we're getting closer as time goes on to actually working cohesively rather than at arm's length. So, it's good. I'm glad. But, I just think there's some risks that I think we need to think about and work through, even at this particular junction, to make sure that we get this right.
Mr.?
Well, I see this as an opportunity. You see what's happening on Route 1 right now. The development opportunities that are there today didn't exist 15 years ago. That's obvious. With people moving, you know, Providence building out, Boston being built out, and here we are, right in the middle. We have three hotels going up all around us. We need them, and we need to be able to work with them. I don't think our job is to predict the future. I think our job is to kind of come to sort of language that protects the town going forward and take out the gray area, and if that means looking at the lease and putting in provisions that, as their business model changes, you know, the town's finances will change on the plus side with that. So, the fact that we're talking, you know, is only a positive, and I think through dialogue, you can accomplish a lot. I mean, if you can, you know, stand back and point fingers, nothing gets done, and when you get the lawyers involved and you start, you know, pointing fingers, nothing good comes of that. But, the fact that they're willing and we're willing, we should, you know, take advantage of the opportunity. I mean, technically, they can just say, well, the lease is the lease. We can, you know, battle about the gray areas and the stuff that we don't agree on in court, but, you know, nobody wins there.
No.
So, I see it as an opportunity. I think we should focus and try and, you know, work together and identify, you know, what we perceive as gray areas and try and eliminate those and, you know, move this thing forward.
Just a sort of a point of mechanical order, if we were to agree to this middle ground, that would be, have to be sort of an addendum to the lease. Would that have to go in front of the town meeting?
I think, that's an interesting question. I don't know, we didn't really talk about that.
No, I think.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I think it would be more of a memo of understanding.
Right.
Because we're in flux.
It's interpretation of the existing document.
No, but if, but if you said for that particular, you know, bank of seats, or lack thereof, we were making an agreement, which both parties would sign, I'm assuming that the, that would be a change to the lease or a change to the contract.
Yeah, I think, what I was thinking anyways was, we've got a shot to kind of work through this.
Yeah.
If we cannot work through it, then I'm in the position where I'm picking up the lease and saying, you're in violation of the lease, because that's what our attorney is saying, that there's some acknowledgement to fix this or add.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, what does the path look like?
Yep. If it goes where we can figure out some common ground and change the lease, then that lease would have to go to town meeting.
Right.
To get, so it's the gray area in the middle.
Right.
To get that gray area fixed, you know, my feeling, I'll be honest with you, the $15,000 or the 30,000 will be eaten up in a couple of months.
Right.
And then we'll still be dealing with the same thing, so.
I think with the way we viewed this, John, was this is an understanding by both parties, is this is what, that we're going to resolve our differences over the interpretation of the agreement at this point, is sort of a resolution of that. What this does is open the door for further discussions on the broader scale, on the broader scale of the lease itself, to get to terms that really makes sense going forward. So, and as Jim correctly points out, that if we do amend the lease ultimately, that that will have to go to town meeting for final approval.
Oh, no, I understand that, but would this be an amendment to the lease? But, you're saying these are a memory or a side?
I think it would be a memorandum of understanding on both sides as to how we've interpreted for the time being.
Anyone else?
I actually think it's, I mean, I think it's a great settlement, given all the circumstances, and I think putting that behind us and putting our energy on working with them, working on, you know, renegotiating, I'm not positive if you throw all the billboard and water stuff into that, that it's going to get done before the Maytown meeting at all. And even if you just use the stadium and not the other stuff, I still think that's pretty aggressive. But, you know, I think it's, I'd rather get 15 than spend 30 in litigation and be behind.
Well, to be clear about the fact that the billboard issue is really a different board than this board.
Yeah.
So, that's a different, but I guess in the spirit of the discussion that we were having, there are some outstanding issues that need to get resolved. And so, you know, part of the discussion was, you know, let's try and move forward on those fronts as well and get those things resolved.
That'd be great if we could.
But, those issues should be handled completely separately, because they are completely.
Right.
Because this town has had a history of MOUs with the Kraft Organization, and we have not, I don't think we have, we have come out as well as we should have. So, I would look at all these, all these billboard issue, the seat issue, completely separate. No MOUs combining the stuff. First of all, the billboard issue is within, like you said, was with another board.
That's right.
We don't have the right to make it part of.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think we'd work in a vacuum either. If there was an opportunity to streamline a process, it would be with the Water and Sewer Commission, with us, with them, to try to kind of collectively, this and anything else that's out there that is worth talking about. But, you're right, Ginny, you don't want to, and Chris, you don't want to bog it down with.
But, my concern has always been, this is precedent setting, and I think what you're talking about is just taking care of this year, but I'm thinking of going, you know, going forward. So, if we are going to do some actual looking at the lease again, I mean, I want to be able to look at it to, you know, for the benefit of the town, looking at it, looking at it for the town.
Right, but that, that's our goal as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think what it, what it is, is, and I wanna be crystal clear about this, this is a beginning.
Mm-hmm.
That's all it is. It's an opportunity to start, and I think that it would be, I think it would be in our collective interest to, to get the, get the process started now, um, and, and sort of work with an understanding that, you know, we're starting off on a, on a good foot and let's get going from here.
Yeah, it's an opportunity to start fresh.
But also, but also, if, if we're gonna start this, then we have to con, continue with it in the, in a timely fashion.
Well, I agree with that.
Because we've been going through this for months.
I agree with that.
It has been delayed, delayed, delayed.
Agreed, agreed.
I think what, what I envision is somebody from the selectmen, someone from the planning board, somebody, you know, legal counsel, town management, getting in a room and saying, what are we thinking?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not just, you know, I, I'd even bow out of it if, if there's a group that could kinda move forward and get the dialogue going. And, and at the end of the day, I, I'll be honest with you, we're not doing a disservice by ignoring the optimal with respect to the lease because
Right.
if it's not resolved, something else will come up, something different, a border to from now, and we're gonna be kicking ourselves that we didn't handle it in two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen, so. One way or the other, it's gonna, either we make a, a change to the lease or fight over it, or change the lease to go to the future, but, uh, I think it's worth pursuing.
Yeah, and, and when we did the tour for Gillette Stadium, and there were a pretty good number of people there, and a number of people took me aside and said, I agree with you in regard to the Optum Lounge. They took, they took an awful lot of seats out. That's tax money. I pay my taxes.
Yeah.
That's the deal that was, that was worked out, so. It's not just, so it's not, we're not just thinking about this. This is something that, that, that people of Foxborough are also very aware of.
All right, so this was really a fifteen minute discussion, just to say, is this something that you guys wanna pursue and?
It's worth pursuing.
Release Bill and, um, to keep having these discussions?
Well, I think if you could, if somebody could, um, you know, draft the, you know, and describe the monies, draft the language, draft how it's going to be bolted on to the, to the lease, have council review it, um, and then bring it back to the board.
I think your, your instruction, I'm not gonna put words in your mouth here, but the instruction would be that you would ask me to work with town council to draft language, working with, uh, council for NPS, Craft Group, to draft language to help resolve this, the current situation into sort of, sort of, sort of a framework for discussions going forward.
Yeah, and, and, and it tried to define, um, what the left side and the right side are so that we know what meeting halfway really means.
Yes.
And, and, uh, our town council is going, should be very involved in the, uh, writing of the lease.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Shouldn't be just.
No, that's right.
One-sided, and then we review it, that's.
No, it would have to be done jointly.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you all. Next item, we have the Foxborough Planning Board, um, requesting a bond release, um, for a subdivision in town. So we know who you are, but if you could just introduce yourself to the people?
I'm Gabby Jordan, I'm the staff planner.
Ron Bresky, Planning Board.
Chris Gallagher, Town Engineer.
So how, how can we help you?
I'll jump in. Um, so we're here to discuss Sumner Estates, which is Rothschild Drive down the far end of Summer Street, uh, small subdivision, um, two, three houses included in the subdivision. Um, the planning board has worked with the developer, um, over the last year plus, setting deadlines to complete the work. Uh, those deadlines have come and gone. The planning board has pulled the bond for the project, and we are here with an estimate, um, roughly sixteen thousand dollars to complete the, the punchless items and, and take care of some problems to complete the project. Um, there was an email that came in from, from Dawn Triani, developer, uh, earlier today with a schedule. He was doing some sidewalk work yesterday and does have paving on the schedule for Thursday. Um, you know, with approval of the board tonight, I'm gonna start to work with contractors, people that we have under contract already, um, some other contractors to complete the work. If he gets to it before I do, then we don't spend the bond money and, and the work gets done, you know, either way. Um, but I know the planning board is, has gone through the steps and has, has given, um, given time to complete the work, and the residents on the street have put up with a lot down there, so the three of us sit here tonight to complete the street, complete the project.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I just hope that you do vote in our favor for this. Uh, we are, you know, doing this for the betterment of the taxpayers on the street. It's been unpaved for, well, a year and a half with raised structures, and we would like to complete it before winter, and this is our opportunity if he does not fulfill his obligation.
Yeah, there, there's, there's a family that has been there for eight years, and , uh, they've put up with a lot of, uh, you know, work that has not been finished. Um, we really would like to, um, get permission from you so that we can get on the list for the paving company. Um, if, uh, we have to wait another two weeks for the next, um, for the selectmen meeting, it might be too late to get on the list to do the paving before the beginning of the winter. Um, so really appreciate your help.
Okay, thank you. Open it up to the board?
No, if nothing else, it's leverage, that's all. I'm in favor.
Yeah, and you guys have time to get it paved?
Uh, yeah, we're, we're at the end of the season. You know, the next, next month, this month is, is it, um, depending on the weather.
Now, if we approve this total amount and come Thursday, he does get a good amount of it, I read the same email and it seemed like he had plans to have a lot of it done. Do we have to re-vote, or you just use whatever, or how does that look?
No, it's, it, you know, you vote the total amount, you know, you, I, I believe everybody has the, the small spreadsheet. There's limited items, paving is the big, big ticket. Um, you know, there are trees that have been planted that, when they came off the truck, looked like they may be healthy and may, may do well. They had, they did not, um, they did not do well this summer, and they need to be replaced. That's the other, you know, other ticket item.
Yeah.
And then the detention basin down there for the stormwater is, I don't know that it's been maintained since it was installed, and the weeds are taller than I am, so, um, that needs to be taken care of as well. So we'll only spend what we need to. If he paves Thursday, then, um, we're not gonna spend that twelve thousand dollars.
Then he gets the rest of that back once it's completed, okay?
Dave and Jenny?
Nope, I'm, I'm fine with it.
You know, I'm supporting the planning board.
Yeah. Um, and I, and I took the time, I talked to Gabby a little bit about it this week, so I, I have the background. Um, it's, it's hand in hand with this, the town has been plowing that road even though the structures are raised and it's not completed?
Correct.
And that's, that's not our planning board policy? I'm not here to plan any, but it's.
No, it's actually, um, an act of good faith
Mm-hmm.
on the town because you can't leave taxpayers without safe access from their residents, so if a developer doesn't plow the roads, the town does take care of it.
Yeah, no, my experience, you know, in, in the one winter I've been here is that for public safety reasons, you know, when they are residents, if there is no prior agreement with the developer to maintain the street and plow the street, that the town does plow those roads.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, we've been in discussion with Bill and Roger to, um, at a minimum, have waivers put in place to hold the town not liable
Yep.
uh, for any damages. Uh, you know, new curbing goes in now, and all of a sudden, a month from now, we're plowing it, then they come back in the spring and they look at us. So we are working on that to, um, on the few developments that are out there now to make sure that we don't have any.
The goal is to clean, is to clean them all up so that we don't have this kind of issue, and, and, and everybody here is working to try and achieve that goal, so, um, I've actually reached out to the developer myself and said, you know, we need to have this resolved, and obviously, we don't wanna be here tonight doing this because obviously, this is sort of the last straw. Um, but he has assured me that, that he's gonna get this work done, uh, it's scheduled to be done this Thursday. Um, there are other items, as I understand, that still need to be addressed, but as far as the major piece, the paving piece, uh, that is scheduled for this, this, this week, which, by the way, is a great day weather-wise planned, so that should work out pretty well. Yep. On the unusually warm weather that day.
Okay. Uh, and just more of a clerical, so there's nineteen thousand being held in escrow, and you're only requesting fifteen nine of that bond?
That's, that's what I've estimated to complete the work, so that's what we're looking for, uh, what we're moving on tonight.
Anyone else from the board? Any more discussion? Do we have a motion, uh, in the affirmative we can vote on?
Yeah, like to make a motion that, um, we allow the landing board, um, to, um, spend up to the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars to complete Rothschild Drive.
I'll second that.
I think, uh, under discussion, we're giving them the right to spend it, we're giving them the right to take the bond.
Okay, right to take the bond.
Further discussion? You wanna amend that motion just so it's clear?
So, under discussion, so they're basically gonna, it's gonna cost fifteen thousand nine twenty-six, but they're taking the whole nineteen thousand, is that what the motion?
No.
No, I, I think the motion is to, out of the nineteen thousand
Okay.
take back fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six from the bond in order for the planning board to hire, to get the, the road done.
Correct, right. So I would like to make a motion that we allow the planning board to take from the bond held in escrow, the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars to complete Rothschild Drive.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Sorry you had to go through all this.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Okay, three public hearings. The first one is the discussion and vote on the alumni game, so if there's representatives from N, NPS LLC.
I'll read the notice. In Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough will revise general bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also stadium rules and regulations. Will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, number of the third, two thousand and fifteen, beginning at seven thirty-five PM, in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, to review the application submitted by NPS LLC for the two thousand and sixteen Winter Classic Alumni Game. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for the, for this event is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome. Um, so all these, we'll run these three public hearings the same, we'll give you an opportunity to present. We'll discuss it, we'll ask you questions because of the public hearing, then we'll open it up for, to the public, then we'll close the hearing, and then we'll vote, and after the hearing's closed, we can't get any more information from you, so speak at the beginning. Thank you.
Great, so, uh, I'm Phil Butifwoko with Gillette Stadium, and Jess Inos with Gillette Stadium as well. So this application is for the NHL Alumni Game. Uh, that will be played between the Boston Bruins and the Montreal Canadiens and their respective alumni. Uh, hopefully, we'll find out in the next couple weeks who those actual alumni are that are coming back for the game, but as we know, both, both, uh, teams have some tremendous alums that, uh, that have been on the ice for years. Uh, so this game would be, uh, played at three thirty, uh, in the afternoon. The gates would open at one thirty, and parking lot scheduled for eleven thirty. The, uh, anticipated crowd is, uh, is approximately fifty thousand. Uh, this ticket is tied in with the Winter Classic ticket, so when you buy a ticket, uh, for the Winter Classic, you also get the Alumni Game, uh, ticket in the, in the same, the same price. So the prices do vary from ninety-nine dollars to four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Again, that's for the two games. Uh, the, there will be a Spectator Plaza, basically a fan festival, uh, in Lot Twenty-two associated with the game, uh, that the NHL will, uh, coordinate and manage with its sponsors and, and other, um, affiliate organizations. Uh, we do plan to, uh, serve, uh, food out there and also apply for a one-day liquor license. Uh, that's in the, in the process, uh, with that paperwork. Prior to the Alumni Game, both the Bruins and the Canadiens would practice, uh, on the ice, and then we would change over for, uh, for the game, uh, itself. Uh, after the game, uh, which should be approximately two hours, uh, we would have a lot of rehearsals for the next, the next day, being the Winter Classic itself. So, uh, although it's a, only a two-hour game, it becomes a long day from an operational standpoint with, with the rehearsals, uh, post-event. Uh, so, um, otherwise, we will operate, uh, this game, uh, just like we do a Patriots game, from a, from a full stadium standpoint, from, uh, security, parking details, state police, uh, certainly Chief O'Leary, Chief Hatfield's operations, and all would be a normal full-stadium, uh, event.
Anything else?
No, it's just from, uh, an information standpoint, we have, uh, obviously, building a, an ice rink on the field, this is a first for us. Um, we've been pleasantly surprised in the planning process thus far. From a, a timeline standpoint and even, um, public safety from having staff on site, whether it be Fallon Ambulance or Foxborough Fire, it actually mirrors a full-stadium stage build almost exactly, right down to the protective surfaces that we're putting down on the field first. So that's been, um, we didn't know going into it that it was going to be essentially the same operation, but it is, so it's been helpful in sort of giving us a template that we already have in place, that we already know how to operate and operates really smoothly. That's exactly what we're gonna plug and play, um, for this operation, getting the ice up and, and running on our field.
So a little more detail on that front, not necessarily tied with the, with the license application, but the process to build out the ice will start immediately after the December twentieth Patriots game. So literally that night, we will start laying the, uh, matrix on, on the field and start the conversion over to the ice. So it will take, uh, a good ten days to build the ice surface, build all the atmosphere around, around the stadium that the NHL is planning, and all from an, uh, from just the atmosphere and experience standpoint for the fans. So, uh, there will be a lot of activity at the stadium leading up to this event, but as Jess said, we will be staffed, and I know Chief Hatfield has already had conversations with NHL staff, uh, regarding the build-out.
Okay, all set? All right, thank you. Uh, in our packets, there's correspondence from Chief O'Leary, uh, Chief Hatfield, Stadium Advisory Committee, we have members. Uh, would you like to speak tonight on this topic?
Yeah, please. Uh, Joe Angelico, co-Vice Chair with Mike Ashafer, was standing in for George Bell again.
Okay.
Um, doesn't happen too often, so. Um, one thing that, um, must be noted is that in, um, in the event of extreme weather, the event will be canceled, the alumni event will be canceled. I don't know how we handle that, but that is, uh, one of the, um, caveats to this.
Okay, is, um, that was a topic that just came up before the meeting also. You, you wanna talk about the rain da, so there's no rain date or just for the second one?
There is no rain date for the, for the Alumni Game, but, but there is for the, uh, for the, for the hockey game.
Okay. Okay.
Now, one point. Mike Ashafer, Stadium Advisory Committee Vice Chair, co-Vice Chair. This is a hockey at the stadium, something new. It's gonna be a new, different type of crowd who's unfamiliar with the parking lots, I'm gonna make that assumption, also unfamiliar with the stadium. Um, so it's incumbent upon team ops to make sure you're manned up a hundred percent to handle this crowd. It's a, it's New Year's Eve, followed by New Year's Day. Start working on the people now.
Is that, uh, you, full, full, um, team op anticipation?
Full-stadium operation, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had numerous conversations with the, with the NHL staff already from a staffing standpoint and their expectations and what they've seen and experienced at other venues, uh, in, in past years, and, you know, we, we plan to operate just like we do a full Patriots game.
Okay. Jim, just from a, from a logistical perspective though, I guess what Mike is referring to is that are you gonna have any logistical issues getting people to work because of dates that they're in play? You think that's gonna be an issue? You think that's gonna be an issue?
I'm sorry, we, we've hosted events at the stadium on New Year's Eve before. We've hosted events for Patriots games on Christmas Eve before. So from a staffing standpoint, you know, we're not concerned. We've practiced this in the past. We have different incentives and different ways in which we make sure that our staffing is at the full deployment.
And quite frankly, the, the feedback from a number of our game day employees is they're very excited about this because it is so unique and all, but I know that, I know that our staff has already been working on, on staffing for the, for both days.
Thank you.
And again, we have correspondents from Chief O'Leary and Chief Hatfield and the Board of Health in the hearing, so you're welcome if, if you feel the need to say anything. Bill, anything that we're not aware of that came up from any departments, or?
No, I guess the, the only question was with the rain day for the Alumni Game, because we're just, uh, because that, that does present a bit of a logistical nightmare if it does get, if it do an extreme, extreme weather, because everybody's gonna be deployed, everybody's gonna be there. And the question is, so the question is, when will it be called, if it's gonna be called? So we understand when people should be called back, if you will. Is, so is that, has that been considered at this time?
The, the conversation is all about weather. And, and, and it's, whether it's too much rain or too much snow becomes a factor. So it, it really does depend on, on the forecast. And so it could be a decision made twenty-four hours in advance, it could be a decision made six hours in advance based on the, the actual weather situation. There get, there comes a time when there's too much snow, you just can't skate.
Right.
Yeah, so, and, and if the snow falls faster and harder than the forecasts led us to believe, that decision could be made closer to game time than, than we would all like.
It might be snowing very hard in Foxborough and not really snowing in Burlington.
Right.
So how will you be notifying people if the game is canceled? Do, are you capturing email addresses, or?
We have contact information for everyone who's purchased tickets.
As, as you, they purchase the tickets, they provide you with, with, oh, okay.
So before the board discusses it, is there anyone from the audience that has concerns or comments? Seeing none, I'll open up for the board.
Actually, a general question for Bill. Bill, this is, subsections of the Great Divide policy and endorsements are attached to the back, and I'm assuming those are for our attention. And on reading them, I just was wondering if, are these, are there any changes to the applicant's current insurance policy that we should be aware of in this language?
No, I actually had that language reviewed by, by the, the staff at MYA to make sure that the language was consistent with the language that we've used up to now, and it's the same language. So that, that was just merely to put, to, to, to be put in there as a, an addendum for the licenses. But we've been asking for that information to be put in there because it's just important that we have it. But we, I actually had that language just reviewed by MYA. MYA said anytime there's a question about that, that we will review it. I spoke to the vice president today, and he said he's personally reviewed it, and he said he's fine.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't something that had changed in the policy that we should be aware of.
No, it's, it's the same.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions for NPS?
Just, just being that it's New Year's Eve, do you have a, a time established yet, you know, what time the parking lots are gonna close? The lots are scheduled to close two hours after game. So we're talking roughly seven-thirty.
Well, what happens if people decide to, after the game, they decide to go to Bar Louie's for, to celebrate New Year's Eve? But, and the cars are still in the, the same thing happen?
Right, that's, that's, we can't, we can't, we can't stop that if they're going to spend time and, and money at Patriot Place. We can't stop it, but.
When you say that the parking lots close two hours afterwards, what, what does that, what does that mean?
Well, effectively, there's no tailgating after that, after that time period.
Okay.
And we also, and we also start, especially across the street, start moving people out if they're hanging around their cars and, and all. But if a car is parked and someone is spending money at, at one of the Patriot Place restaurants, we, we can't move that car.
So when you say the parking lots close, it just means people can't hang around in it? Okay, thank you.
So the plan to be established with public safety officials, it's now two hours after the end of the game. That's the plan?
The only thing I noticed was the Walpole Police's concerns of, you know, that size of a crowd, so I'm assuming that you're gonna work with them on any of their stuff.
They had correspondence more for the second hearing. This one, they said they didn't expect problems, but they do want communication and working together for the second one. We, you, did you receive that correspondence from, I think it was the, one of the police department in Walpole?
I did not.
I believe we did, yeah. It's similar, and again, with the entire operation, it'll be similar to any full-stadium Patriots game that we have, and we do work with Walpole whenever they have a concern.
Well, that was his point, that it's a, it's a full-stadium event, they're gonna have to deploy Walpole resources to be able to manage it, same as they always do.
No more questions from the board? There is someone from the audience that had a question? You had, do have to walk up. And if you could just introduce yourself.
Tracy Faciliate Van Dornav. Just a quick question. I know for concerts that people cannot tailgate without a ticket. It's a ticket per person and each, you know, for each car. I don't believe, I don't know if that's true for football games, but I'm wondering if it's true for this one? Or can anybody get in those tailgating parking lots regardless if they have a ticket to the event?
Did you understand the question?
Yep. The intent was to allow anyone into the parking lots. Certainly, the, the NHL with their Spectator Plaza allows that to, in, in general, allows that to be open to any hockey fan that wants to come and enjoy those activities. So the intent was not to require tickets to park.
I think with the understanding it is such a unique event, you're probably gonna get more people to come to that than you would to come to a tailgate for football, not go in and watch the football game, so.
Is that plaza open throughout the Alumni Game?
It's open, starting when the parking lots open, and it closes when the game starts.
Oh, closes when the game starts, okay. All right, so that lingers, the people lingering aren't gonna be?
Correct, there'd be nothing, yeah. Unless they're gonna spend money at Patriot Place, they're not gonna linger around.
Chief O'Leary, were you aware of that?
In terms of?
Not needing a ticket to get into the parking lots?
Uh, it's common practice for most of the events. The only ones that we have issues with with the country music festivals and Chesney concerts, and that's where, quite honestly, I mentioned of having parties that all be underage drinkers. And it's been fairly successful in reducing the numbers that we've had to deal with in the parking lots.
Well, isn't it?
And I don't think that the audience we're gonna see is underage kids because they're not gonna be able to afford the tickets. It'll be a different flying town.
Did you just say that it's only for the Chesney and the Country Fest that, the ticket, to get, you need a ticket to get into the?
Correct.
Well, I thought it was for every, every event that has music, you were supposed to. That was the understanding that I had. Every, everything that we have approved, because I've asked this a number of times at, at these hearings, that whenever we have something, and, and I've asked, you know, do you need a ticket to get into the parking lot? I mean, the whole idea is, when you have a concert with music, if you can get in there without showing your ticket, then you can listen to the music while it's going on inside the stadium. And that was the whole idea of requiring that you need a ticket to get into the parking lot.
We operate a, a parent, I mean, I don't know if we should be discussing right now previous event licenses as they pertain to concerts. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you want us to continue to go down this path.
Well, I think, I think the, I think the question is, if you come to this event, and either this one or the, the one, you know, that, the hearing after this one, without a ticket inside a car, can you tailgate? I think that's the question. And you're saying you can, and the chief is saying it's been the past practice. And you, and you remember it differently.
Well, I remember asking a, a number of times, do you need, is a ticket required for, these are the concerts now. Is a ticket required to get into the parking lot?
Detail in the past that we operate a, like a parent pickup and drop-off location for our One Direction concerts and for Taylor Swift. There's a lot of different factors at play for different concerts, and what we do is really treat them all individually. So, you know, I've been before you multiple times, and we talk about.
But, I'm sorry, that's not the understanding I have. It was my understanding that, because I asked a number of times, and after a while, I said, well, this is what they always do, so I don't have to ask it anymore. So apparently, I have to ask it every time. So, and I think it should be requirement that if you, if you, if you're gonna go to the, to the stadium to listen for a concert, for the, if a concert is playing, then in order to get into the parking lot, you should have a ticket to get into that parking lot.
I, I'm gonna just cut this off a little bit, because it, those are the concert discussions and not in front, but.
Well, it'll be discussed next time we have a, something for the concerts, and I hope the Board of Selectmen supports me in, in this requirement.
But for, for tonight's discussion on this, the logistics of people coming to the, the classic match, the game, or whatever you wanna call it, and, and car comes in with five people, you, you don't check tickets to make sure five tickets are there, and you let them, you let them in. Any more discussion? I, I, I'm not cutting, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's.
So I ask you generally, I know that you, this is impossible to know, but now that we've talked about it, the world's gonna know about it. But have you given any thought to how many people who are not gonna be attending the event? In other words, that don't have tickets will be showing up?
I don't know if you're looking at me or Chief O'Leary.
No, I'm looking at anyone that knows.
You're looking right through me, so.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking.
It's, it's so hard to, it's so hard to get a feel for it. It is a unique event, but we also all know that traffic on Route One colludes a lot of people from thinking about shopping at Patriot Place on, on, on major event days as well, so it, it's very hard to gauge.
Where it's a holiday, two people have plans, and if they're not gonna go to the game, I really don't think they're gonna be.
And there's a, there's a fee in place. You still have to, to pay to park. It isn't an open parking lot, it isn't an open site.
Just a question, have the tickets all been, have gone on sale yet or not gone on sale yet?
They have gone on sale.
They have gone on sale? And so is, is it sold out yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
You can still buy some, Bill.
Four hundred and thirty-nine bucks each.
Any other questions before we close the public hearing? Discussion? Do we have a, a motion to close the public hearing?
To make a motion that we close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion on closing? All those in favor? The hearing is now closed, so let's deliberate, and then we'll come to a vote. Concerns?
In, in reading the, sort of the, the letter from Chief O'Leary, he said that it is a, it's a new venue, never been tried before. There's probably some uncertainty as to how it's gonna come out. You guys are, you know, it's been done in other venues across the country. It's done at Fenway Park, it's been done in Chicago. And it, it really is a cool event. I do have concerns about, you know, sort of more people showing up than you know, than you're prepared for. And like, I was with Ginny, I, I thought that you would have to have a ticket to get in. But I think Chief O'Leary's summary was, he supports the event, albeit he, he's accepting the fact that there might be some challenges. But I'll, I'll support the event.
Anyone else?
I, I think, you know, being the time of year, chances are, hopefully, it's gonna be cold for good ice. You know, people do show up, they're gonna be going to, to watch the game at, at Bar Louie's or Splitsville or Skip Jackson. You know, I, I just see it as, as more opportunity for people to enjoy Fan Fest and, and the restaurants, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, no, the only thing is, you know, Dave brings up a good point. People going to those other establishments to watch, so I just hope Chief, and Chief and, and everybody comes up with a really good security plan, just because it is that night, New Year's Eve, when, you know, a lot of the amateurs are out there. Other than that, I mean, everything's in order, and I think it's a great opportunity for, for us to have it here.
And then I actually share some concern also that was brought up by the Stadium Advisory Committee, that the fact that it's, it's a one-time opportunity, it hasn't been done before. I don't know what to expect, so. I'm assuming between the police chief, the fire chief, your experience, you're prepared for the unexpected, and you can adjust and accommodate when it happens. But I think this is a case where I'm not sure what's gonna happen. But it, it's a positive thing, it, to bring that venue here, and the crowds, and the, the opportunity. But I just caution that I don't know what, what it's gonna bring too, so. Anyone else? Motion and the affirmative?
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the Winter Classic Alumni Game for December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries five zero. Assuming the same, same group, same discussion, pretty much, so you can, we'll, we'll open up the hearing, but you don't, I don't think you have to go to a lot of the background on this one.
Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to mass general law, chapter one forty, section one eighty-one, and section one eighty-three A, and chapter one thirty-six, section four. Town of Foxborough revised general bylaws, article five, section six, and also stadium rules and regulations. Will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November third, two thousand and fifteen, beginning at seven forty-five PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, one twenty South Street, to review the application submitted by NPS LLC for the two thousand and sixteen Winter Classic. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the office of the selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome again, if you wanna give an overview.
So this application for the two thousand and sixteen NHL Winter Classic game, I will say that we've worked for five years to attract this event to Gillette Stadium. It is not, it is a one, one-time-a-year event, and so we're, we're honored to, to host this prestigious event. Besides the Stanley Cup, it is the most prestigious hockey event on, on the calendar each year. The NHL staff has hosted this similar event in Buffalo, Chicago, Pittsburgh, Washington DC, and at Fenway Park several years ago. So there's a lot of experience from their standpoint. We have site visits with their staff frequently. In fact, tomorrow, there are fifteen people coming from the NHL. Last week, there were almost thirty people here, so it has been continuous site visits, very professional staff, and, and we will be ready for, for the event in, in all, in all facets of, of the operation of the event, so. Just so you know, the, the, once the game is over, there will be ice on the, there's plans for the ice for the next day, January two, of course, if we are in a, in a delay situation or postponement to the next day because of weather. But soon, soon after the January second timeframe is released, the ice will come out, and we need to prepare the field for the Patriots practicing for playoff situations. If we are lucky to certainly advance through the NFL playoffs. So our plan is that by Wednesday, late Wednesday, the field will be ready for the Patriots to get back on the field for Thursday morning practice, so just in case anyone wants to know about that transition. It'll take us ten days to load the field in, and it'll take us three days to clear it out.
Thank you, Phil. Anyone else, Stadium Advisory? Differences to be noted from the last application?
Just the point that Putnam Way will be open, okay? And also, there'll be entertainers between periods. So there will be an entertainment event that will pop. I don't know if any details are on that yet, but there will be entertainment for the crowd.
Anyone from the audience in the second application? Questions from the board?
Yeah, there's practice sessions for the NHL, NHL players, and I just was wondering when those are scheduled, and would those be open to ticket holders or the general public?
The practice sessions will be prior to the Alumni Game, and they will not be open to the, to the general public. By, by NHL decision, not ours.
But if you're a ticket holder for that event, will you be able to go to the practice?
No, it, they'll be before.
It's not, not open at all?
Not open at all. They'll be before gates open.
Great, thanks.
When will the, according, as long as they have ice weather, when will the facility be ready to skate on?
Well, the first, the first time people will skate on the ice is the Wednesday prior to the Friday event. So the, the NHL conducts a media skate, if you will, just a publicity skate for their media partners on that Wednesday. Thursday is the first time the teams will get on because it is a regular season game for them, so they're both coming from, from other regular season games. So they'll practice that, that Thursday morning, the Alumni Game at three-thirty, and then they'll play the game the next day.
Okay, I remember when it was at Fenway, they had colleges playing on it and all that, so there's none of that component?
No, and, and in fact, the NHL, there've only been two other venues that have hosted college games or, or high school games post the Winter Classic, so they don't allow anyone to skate on it prior to the Winter Classic. So any skating we would have had to do would have been January two through five or whatever. have been January 2 through 5 or whatever. But we can't do that due to the football schedule.
Okay. Jess, what type of entertainment are we looking at?
Right now, it's all being booked through the NHL, but it's very similar to what you saw for the home opener. So nothing really time-wise, nothing too significant, a couple of songs. They're going to really popular acts, basically, stuff that anybody would know. And so it would look a lot like the home opener did with something at the very beginning for, you know, seven to eight minutes, then followed by, as the ice is being cleared in between periods, three to four-minute brief performances.
So you guys will have to set up a stage, other than, because they're not going to use the ice to perform, right?
Anyone else? For the hearing closes, do we have a motion to close it?
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Further discussion on closing? All those in favor? Hearing is now closed. Deliberate? I think it did before. No more discussion? Motion in the affirmative?
Make a motion that we approve the application in front of us for the January 1st New Year's Classic with a rain date of January 2nd.
I'll second, it's Winter Classic. I'll second that.
Seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. And the last, and I also want to say, and I know you guys do work hard for getting the venues up here, as three, and this is the third one, another year of the MIA. I appreciate that. So we have a public hearing to read?
Town of Foxborough Board of Selectmen, public hearing notice. The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough revised general bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also stadium rules and regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015, beginning at 7:55 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, to review the application submitted by NPS LLC for the 2015 MIAA High School Super Bowls. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome again.
Thank you. So this event on Saturday, December 5, will have six high school football championships, and a very similar schedule as we have in the past. First game starting at nine o'clock. The last game is scheduled for eight o'clock. The MIA staff controls the game logistics and all, working with the teams to be sure that we start the subsequent games as close as possible to the actual game time, or the published game time. Of course, that depends on the flow of the game and how long each game takes, and whether we're dropping a lot of passes and the clock's not running, or if we're scoring a lot and we're kicking off a lot, and so the clock stopped. But the MIA staff manages all that. We expect throughout the day, 17,500 people or so over the six games. Typically, there are two games that will attract more fans than others, basically the Division 1 and 2, the two games based on what towns are playing in those games. And we work with the MIA on the actual schedule of the games to allow those fans to access the stadium in time to watch their games. One of the things that the Crafts did this past year was really invested in the expansion of the ticket office. We used to have a lot of lines with some of the teams and towns that showed up when their fans all arrived at the same time, and we had long lines to purchase tickets, and folks got into the games after the game started. But the Crafts invested in the expansion of the ticket office. We have a number of new, additional ticket windows now, so we'll be able to manage that crowd easier than we have in the past. In fact, last year, we added a number of temporary ticket windows out in the parking lot to help offset the long lines. The general operation of the event, parking lots open that morning. There is no tailgating allowed for this event. It is really a flow, so people come to watch their town play, and then they leave thereafter. All of the fans will sit on the east side of the stadium. The teams are on the respective sides of the field, but fans are only on the one side. And parking is free. We do not serve alcohol for this event. Certainly, we have a normal food and beverage operation up for the game. And I know that Chief Hatfield will staff it as a Level 1 event.
Thank you, Phil. Before we discuss, anyone from the audience that wanted comments or concerns? The board?
Does the advisory committee have anything?
No, complete.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Any more discussion? Motion made. Second?
I'll second.
Discussion on closing the hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries five-zero. Deliberate? All right. Motion in the affirmative?
Make a motion that we approve the MIAA 2015 Super Bowl for, what's the date, John? December 6?
December 5.
December 5, 2015, at Gillette Stadium.
I'll second that, and let's hope Foxborough's in it.
Further discussion? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Page 2. Showcase Live for a change of manager discussion and a vote. Listed as Attorney Peter Tam. This is not a public hearing, so there's nothing to read into the record. Evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
So if you could just introduce all three of you and present the application for change of manager?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Peter Tam from Goldsmith Stores on behalf of National Amusements, in this case Showcase Live and Showcase Cinema Deluxe. I have both proposed managers here, and we can take them in order, two separate hearings, I understand. But I wanted to introduce Kim Davies, proposed manager of Showcase Live, as well as Kevin De, I'm going to get this wrong, Kevin, but Kevin DiBalla of Cinema Deluxe.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
So last time I was before you, with Joe Norman, who you will remember, he is the, he is the manager of record for both establishments at this time.
One manager, both establishments?
That's right. And that was really a matter of responsibility from the organization rather than preference. I know Joe, probably one of the hardest-working guys I know, would not prefer ultimately to have that responsibility. But both Kim and Kevin have worked in tandem, and between the two of them have in excess of 25 years of either supervisory or managerial experience with the organization. Much of it here since the development and establishment of these two venues. And I'll let Kim introduce herself, and if you will, I appreciate the time. I know that you have a busy agenda, but she can describe, and you have her resume with a bit of her experience, but she can describe. It actually goes, interestingly, beyond that. There's some family history here, which is worth mentioning.
So hello again. My name's Kim. I'm the manager at Showcase Live, the house manager. I handle all of the events and shows. I'm on-site pretty much 99% of the time for these shows and events. But I've been with the company, actually, for 15 years, in a managerial role for six years. And I've worked in Showcase Randolph from 2009 to about 2012, and then I've been in Foxborough between the theater and Showcase Live for the last three years.
At this time, the request for a change of manager comes because Joe has been promoted, and he's working at the Chestnut Hill facility. So Kim has been on the ground, as has Kevin. They know these facilities intimately. They know procedures. They know liquor licensing policy, zero tolerance policy. Kim knows the chief and has coordinated when necessary for special events. And so this is really more a change of form rather than substance.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
What's the business model now of Showcase Live? I know when it first opened, it was, you know, concert after concert and stuff. Are you guys looking at getting back into that, or?
There's more of a focus now on private events. Really, they find it, they're more lucrative. You know, they, as far as, you know, when they first approached Showcase Live, it was heavy on live acts, and honestly, it wasn't working out very well for them, so they took a step back from it. But my, you know, my main focus is private events. We do have another manager on-site that books live shows, but it's more of a tribute band and small comedy acts. But we do, definitely do a variety, mostly weekends. You know, our calendar varies, whether it's, you know, corporate events, private events. We have definitely a variety.
What's the difference with, between a house manager and a manager?
I'm a house, the, you know, there's the title that I have as a house manager. I handle all operations of Showcase Live. Really, it's just a title that National Amusements, you know, gave me as house manager of, you know, Patriot Place between the theater and Showcase Live. I actually work in both units, but my main focus is Showcase Live. So, you know, I handle all operations of Showcase Live.
And you're both moving up to manager?
Correct. Well, we've...
This is simply a matter for the license, in terms of ultimate responsibility for the license.
Yeah, okay. That was my question. Thank you.
More discussion, questions?
This is the first time you'll be on a license.
That's correct.
And you've been in town long enough to know that the history of
Yes.
stings, and the history of infractions and suspensions and so on. What's your take in how you're going to handle the present climate of liquor license oversight?
You know, we do everything we can to make sure that our staff is prepared. That's, you know, our best thing to do is make sure we have every staff member that's serving alcohol is tip-certified. We make sure that they attend alcohol awareness training every year, at the very least, once a year. It's, you know, we try to stay proactive, and, you know, we make sure we're on top of all of our staff training. We're constantly meeting with them, just going overnightly, you know, what our expectations are for attendance for different live shows, or what to expect for different private events. But we handle, you know, we handle all of our training and take it very seriously.
John, I would also offer, National Amusements, and you've heard this before from John, but for those who haven't, weren't on the board last time we appeared, they have a very unique commitment to the community in terms of both the DA's training as well as the post-prom party. So there's a very real and substantive commitment that the organization has made. And I think the chief would, I won't speak for him, I know better than that, but I think that's something that's coordinated very closely with the town.
No, and part of my role here is just to reinforce that.
Yeah.
So thank you.
And I know, I know we've seen Joe at the Foxcare meetings. Hopefully, we'll see you there as well.
Absolutely.
I think, you know, that's a great group. They share best practices, and they work with the community, you know, for responsible service. So hopefully, we'll see you there.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. No more discussion? Do we have a motion? Actually, it's not a public hearing, so it's just a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the change of manager of Showcase Live to Kimberly Davis.
I'll second that, and welcome.
Thank you.
Motion made, seconded. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. The next item is the Showcase Cinema Deluxe change of manager.
I'll introduce Kevin, and he can certainly summarize his experience with the organization and at this establishment.
My name's Kevin DiBalla. Been at the Patriot Place location since we opened. I've worked very, very closely with Joe Norman in the past, and like to carry on his legacy, so to speak, as far as training our staff. I feel that we go above and beyond with our staff. Not only are servers and bartenders trained continuously, but we train our usher staff and our cashiers as well, so that we don't even allow people who may come in intoxicated to even get to the bars. We're very proactive in our training. And I've been with the company for 23 years now. Prior to this location, I was in Bullford, Rhode Island. So we had a lot of experience.
Thank you, Kevin.
Before we met, and both Kevin and Kim reviewed with me, in addition to the tips training, the serve-safe training, there's also some training that goes on with Jim Staples and his outfit in terms of preparing and training staff at all levels.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
Make a motion that we approve Kevin DiBalla as the new manager of Showcase Cinema Deluxe.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
You're almost on time.
Two minutes past time. 8:25, we had Chief O'Leary, discussion on the constable policy that was given to us.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Prior to discussing that, I just want to follow up on the discussion that was just held for those liquor establishments. And to reiterate, Mr. Gray had a good question about training. November 16th, the District Attorney's Office is actually running a major training event up at Showcase Live. I got the confirmation and an email that I saw this evening, making sure that I will be available to participate. I'll be on a panel with other people from around the area, talking about liquor service issues, as well as having some known trainers joining us there. And the District Attorney is making a big push to have a great deal of participation, not just from Foxborough, but other communities within this area of the county. And I just thought it'd be worthwhile to mention that as part of the discussion you were just having.
Is that something that's open if the board wanted to go and...
Certainly. I think it would be worthwhile. Off the top of my head, I believe it's a morning program, and I don't have the specific time right in front of me. But I think it would be worthwhile, if certainly members of the board could, to see what the liquor servers are being trained in. So if the unfortunate does happen, and they're in front of you, you at least will have some confidence on your decision-making by seeing what they're going through. Tonight, actually, is another step. Earlier this year, the board adopted a new policy as part of your powers, and in creating constables, having regulations for them. We sent out, once it was approved, we sent out letters to individuals that had current constable appointments. Some we did not hear back from, but on further review, I'm submitting eight names for the board to consider of the eight individuals that had applied. And I know ordinarily, you don't take up... And I know ordinarily, you don't take up an issue or vote on it, and that's understandable, so you have a chance to reflect on the information presented. And there were also a question about several people whose dates of appointment are some future date, that they have powers of constables until that time comes in. And I would continue, my recommendation would be to continue those people until their date is actually expired, and then the board could make a determination. I know we set a policy, you were aiming at ten. At one position, would be the chief of police, which I think is a benefit to the community in the long run, not because of me, but I think the future of the community, it's helpful to have that position as one of the enumerated constables. So, I don't know if there's any questions?
Actually, two, chief.
Yes.
In the, in the policy statement, I don't know if you picked them up, but there's a section on the front page where it says that we're gonna have no less than ten, and then a few pages later, it says no more than ten.
Right.
And there's another section that said that all of the constables will live in the town of Foxborough. I didn't, just didn't know if those were, need to be clarified.
Well, I think on, I was having a discussion off-record, because I got a call from another board member.
Are we on the same topic?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly. I think the policy that I was working off of, in terms of the discussion, residency in or proximity to Foxborough. And although we only had one individual that is a Foxborough resident that applied, because it's become a, a business entity, not just somebody filling in. So, these were the people that have been serving as constables in the past and had applied. We did not receive any other inquiries, to my knowledge, that probably would have been directed at the selectman's office, unless members of the board are aware of somebody that was interested in it.
But by that statement, I'm assuming that preference would be given to qualifying residents of Foxborough that applied?
Right.
Okay.
In this case-
But seeing that there's only one, I see where you're going.
Right.
Okay.
One of the criteria that we were looking at is somebody that was experienced in this particular line of work, and has a track record of service of various types of court papers that they're required to handle.
One other question, I know that we, last time we talked about this, there was supposed to be a quarterly reporting to the town clerk. There was supposed to be revenues paid to the town. Has, has that been shored up at all?
I know that I've had discussions with both the town treasurer and the town clerk. They receive copies of our policy when we send out the applications, and I can certainly check and report back to the board with both those entities. I think a, a bigger timeframe for us to watch is the required reporting that's due in April that covers the previous year, in terms of the papers that have been served and the revenues earned, to make sure at that point, if somebody doesn't file that required paperwork, that would be grounds to remove them from office, because it's state law.
And you wouldn't necessarily go back to last April to see the, the members, the existing ones, if they filed?
In fact, in a conversation, when we were doing this work, I asked our town clerk, and he could not remember anybody filing that type of documentation last year. It's been made clear in the policy that the board adopted, that that would be a requirement at the very least, because the state law is mentioned, and the requirement's there.
Okay, so they've been notified, so we're gonna-
Yes.
-see what materializes in April?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, all the, all the constables have presented evidence of bonding?
Yes, they have.
I, I just, I, I spoke to Ed early, early today, and I just found there were some discrepancies that, like, under qualifications, number three, it says, "All applicants shall be current residents of town of Foxborough." Shall means they have to be. So, there's, then we have the list, and some of, and most of these people are outside of town, so what I'd like to see is just, you know, maybe language, you know, a little clarification on the language, so it's not confusing for, for people.
Chairman, just on that point, we, we actually noticed there's a couple inconsistencies in the policy we need to clear up, because at one point, it says that it has to be all Foxboroughs, but at another point, it says that, or proximity.
Right.
So, we need to clear that up, and, and then they should be clarified.
Yeah.
I think what happened is the policy was revised, and the application packet was, you know, the instructions were from the old policy.
Yeah.
That's what's here.
I think the way the chief answered the question was that if we had applicants, qualified applicants, from the town of Foxborough, they would certainly be given preference.
Well, that should be in the-
Should be reflected in the law.
The language should be reflected in that way.
Once that all gets cleared up, basically, what you're looking for us to do is adopt the policy and appoint the three that are, in terms of expired? Did I get that right at the very beginning? Because there's still some that are, there are appointments-
There still have appointments that are still in effect, but we have people that have expired, and that would be the critical three. I believe the policy was adopted, and I think what we would be doing was asking, we would be moving forward to ask the board to amend the policy that's in front of you, so as to clear up those discrepancies.
Okay, so if that's the case, can we put this on the next meeting and get it all 100% cleared up?
One package.
And one package, and we'll do it all then?
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate, we just, we just happened to notice that inconsistency today.
Is there some time requirement for reappointing some of these folks?
Some of them expired in-
Well, some have-
March.
-had their time period expired, because we were waiting to develop a policy, put before the board, and then start anew, that we have a more-
Right.
-consistent process for people coming forward.
Ed, I noticed on the policy, there were two, two types of bonding. There was a bonding for dealing with things for $200, and there was a bonding for dealing with things of, I think it was $7,000, I think, something like that. Do we have, on the list, is there a mix of, of the bonding people?
There is, according to the type of work that each particular constable was doing. You know, I, I did not put that in the documents that you received. Is that something that the board wants to look at?
Well, I just wanna make sure that all the people on the list aren't just bonded for $200. There, there's some-
Right, there were some-
-bonded for $7,000, some bonded for $200.
There were some at higher levels.
Yes, there's a mix, okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got a little bit more cleanup, but other than that, it's no, no big-
No. It's come a long way, and at least now, we're having constables comply with the policy, which is, which is great.
Anything else?
We'll get some rest.
Thank you.
Been a long day for you.
Maybe you could pick up a little time.
That's right.
Okay, next on the agenda, eight thirty, for eight thirty-five, is Country Store. And it's a public hearing for the discussion and the vote of change of ownership. Good evening.
Good evening. I have a signed lease that I've been chasing for a little while.
Okay. And while you do that, we'll read the, the hearing into the, the notice into the record.
Yep. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November, November third, 2015, at 8:35 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on an application and pledge of license and transfer of license and pledge of inventory for an annual wine and malt package store license for the Missha Enterprises, Inc., doing business as The Country Store, 212 North Street, Foxborough, Mass, 02035. Manager Sedalia Messiah.
Excuse me, that's, that's the current manager. The new manager we're asking is Manish Koma Patel.
I'm reading the legal notice, so-
The Form 43 does have Manish Koma Patel. Where do you see the, uh?
Let's, I've read it off of what, whatever was posted.
Country Store. Sedalia, Mass, is the, the past- She's the current manager. Current manager. We have a Form 43, and we have a manager's application, and we have a, you know, the five-page application, all saying that Manish Koma. But I would submit it's a de minimis error, and the reason I would say that is in a change of manager application, it doesn't have to be published. So, that wouldn't, I mean, you know, it is part of this ad, but the transfer has to be published, but, but the change of manager doesn't have to be, so it's, it's an error, but-
Is that the transfer or the change of manager?
I think in doing, in doing business as The Country Store, 212, currently, that's what they're doing business as.
I, um, whatever, I mean, I'm gonna defer to our town manager, I can just say whatever was posted.
I think council was correct. I mean, the, the issue, the, the issue is whether public notices have been given, or whether there's a change of manager, and that is in fact what's before the board to know.
Well, it's a transfer of, a transfer of application, transfer of license application.
So, the, the actual action is, is in fact, was been advertised.
That's been advertised, right. That's been advertised.
Okay, thank you. All right, can you continue? If you could just introduce yourself in the whole-
Yeah, my name is Gregory Demakis. I'm an attorney with offices in Lynn, and to my left is, is the manager of applicant, Manish Koma Patel. And Mr. Patel lives just 20 minutes away from the store in Sharon. We set up a corporation called Foxborough Country Liquors, Inc. He's the sole stockholder, he's the manager, sole director, president, treasurer, secretary. He's been an American citizen since 1999. He's entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Massey Enterprises, Inc., to purchase, to purchase Country Store 212 North Street. The two shareholders of Massey Enterprises, Inc., are Dale Massey and, and the current manager, Sedalia Massey. He's also entered into a lease, which I, I gave you, with William O'Brien trustee of the KPE Realty Trust for the premises. Mr. Patel is going to finance the acquisition of the business, and first, he's getting a loan from Rockland Trust, and second, he sold a business recently, a few months ago, two or three months ago, called Hancock Liquors in Quincy, and he's using the funds from the, from the proceeds from that sale. Because he is obtaining financing from Rockland Trust, we'll be seeking today a pledge of the license and a pledge of the inventory. That's a condition of the commitment letter. I'd be remiss if I didn't say a few words of Mr. Patel. He owns several businesses. He owns four of the businesses in which he has an interest in a liquor license, but several other convenience stores and liquor stores, I mean, in, convenience stores. And he is just one of the most experienced, best operators, at least in the state, right? So, he's, he's, he will be a credit to this community. He'll run a first-class operation. I don't think you'll ever see him in here for anything that's not good, and you're getting a very experienced veteran of the, of this type of business.
Thank you. Do you care to say a few words, or?
Not really. I mean, I have plenty of experience, I know how to run the business.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. So, we'll open up a discussion from the board, but where it is a public hearing, is there someone from the audience that would wanna have any comments? If you could just come up to the microphone, and if you could just state your name and address?
I'm the landlord of the property, William O'Brien. I live in Norton. I used to live in Foxborough for 30 years, but now I live in Norton.
Okay.
I, I ran this store for 28 years, and I sold to the current owner. They've been there, it's a husband and wife. The manager's the wife, and they're, so they're selling it.
So, you, you sold the business, or you sold the property?
I sold the business to them in 2005.
Okay. So, you're still the landlord?
Yes. I had been there since 78.
78, okay. So, it's a recommendation that you're coming to-
Yes, I, I think, you know, I checked him out, all the references, and it was, you know, excellent, excellent, you know. Ten years ago, I would've sold it to him, if it was, if, if they were the applicant at the time, you know.
Okay. And I think you just passed in the-
The signed lease, right.
So, we, so we didn't get that in our packet?
The reason was-
Can you summarize the lease that, we, we haven't had a chance to read it?
Well, it's a, it's a 10-year lease and a, and a five-year option. The other gentleman had a 10-year lease and a 10-year option, because I was selling him the business, so it was like, it was a little, a little different. But I also financed him. So, what is, he still owes me money, so I was a little, you know, I was, I was a little nervous with, 'cause he pledged a license 10 years ago as collateral.
Okay.
So, what happened was, so with a lot of negotiation going on, at one point, I was trying to buy it back, but my wife, my wife wasn't that happy about it, but, you know, with, with her cousin, and so we, he actually outbid, he outbid us for, even though I'm the landlord, you get outbid-
Sure.
-for the, for going back, but I really liked the business, so I still miss it. But, so, I think they'd be great operators. I explained to him about Fox Cares and the alcohol, alcohol organization group, which is good to get involved with, which he, you know, he's interested in doing.
Very good.
The current, the current operator was not interested. No, he, he never went to any of the meetings. I went to the meetings, I didn't even own the store anymore, you know? But I think it'll be different.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Discussion amongst the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
After the hearings close, no more discussion with the applicant.
Oh, I just heard a question. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, if it's, if it stays. So, motion was made, seconded. Further discussion? Okay, Jenny?
Oh, I just, Mr. Patel, it shows that you own, like, four businesses?
Yes.
So, you'll be the manager of record on this one, but will you be overseeing the day-to-day operations on this?
On this one, yes.
Okay, and-
The other ones, no.
No, okay. So, you'll be there, like-
At least 40 hours, if not more.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Chairman, just a clarification.
Yeah.
Isn't there a limitation, council, on how many licenses a person can own?
Five. In a 1-116, it goes up to seven.
Okay.
But he's within, he's within the five.
He's within the five.
Now, he's within the five. It used to be three.
Right.
And now, if you get one, if you get a fourth and fifth license, you have to pay a $5,000 fee to the ABCC. But you can have up to five now, and in January 1, it goes up to seven statewide.
When did that change?
Um, in 2012, we went from three to five, and now we're going from five to seven, and then in 2020, it goes seven to nine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Patel, have, have you had violations under your previous ownership or partnerships? None?
Well, there was, no, we, we have one in, from, he has one from November 1, 1999, Lynn's Variety.
Oh, yes, sir.
And he was not the manager of that store, he was a co-owner, but that's the only store in which, and that was, you know, 16 years ago, and nothing since then.
Okay, thank you. And just having the lease, is there an issue not having the lease before tonight? Would you have reviewed it?
There was a lease in the packet.
Well, we had, we had an unsigned copy.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, we, we read the lease. It just, it just formalizes it.
Gotcha. I thought you were bringing in for the first time, something new.
No, Mr. Mackey, who represents the, was, uh, the represents, Mr. O'Brien was out of town last week.
Okay. Any more discussion? So, the motion's on the table to close it, it was seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor to close the public hearing? Motion carries 5-0. Deliberation among the board? Any discussions?
It sounds like everything's good.
See if a motion in the affirmative?
Make a motion that we approve, give it back to my paperwork, thank you, approve the transfer of the liquor license. Give it back to my paperwork. Thank you. Approve the, um, transfer of the liquor license, um, to...
Mr. Patel?
Yeah, Mr. Patel. I was gonna say, um, Foxborough Country Store, Inc., um, Miniscure Patel.
I'll second that.
Further discussion on the second of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Best of luck.
And was, did you also approve the pledge of the license and the inventory as well to Rockland Trust? Is that part of, uh, 'cause I do need, I do need.
It wasn't part of the motion.
It's, it's in, it's in the.
You still need to do that. It's about, it's about the same application.
Okay. Um, so is the option of rescinding that or making a second motion?
Just make a second, a second, a second motion.
Okay.
Um, so I make a motion that we, what am I making a motion? To pledge the license and, and the inventory?
To Rockland Trust.
To Rockland Trust.
The inventory's still gonna come in about thirty-five thousand dollars.
I mean, I don't know. That's the estimate I was given. Is that about what it's gonna be?
Is that, is that okay for us to just pledge?
It's whatever it is. They might have a, going out of business, yeah.
Okay, I'll second your motion.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? On the second motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
Good luck.
Okay. Community compact, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Bill Keegan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this is an item that was before the board at the last, at the last meeting. Um, the board recalls that this was a process that we're engaged in to make the town eligible. Like, the application of the town would become eligible for the community compact, which is, which is something that.
Actually, can I just interrupt you?
Sure.
'Cause we, we can talk about this, but I've seen the advisory committee here and if we can just switch it and bring that one up first.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
You look tired.
Yeah, you do look tired.
It's fine with me.
Unless you wanna sit for the comp, yeah, if you wanna come to the table. So we're gonna be here anyways, talking about it.
Well, you guys got lucky.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, so thi- this is on our agenda. At the last meeting, uh, there was, I think, one extra article that was brought on. And then we were contemplating closing it, so we said we're gonna let two weeks pass, advertise it, entertain anything that might come on. So we need to have that discussion and all of the articles move forward. But while you're here, do you wanna just introduce yourself and see how you fit into this myriad of process over the next, between now and town meeting?
Sure. Kristen Papiano, Vice Chair, Advisory Committee.
Uh, Tracy Fasili passed Chair and current AdCom member.
And I just, not to be rude, but Frank, do you wanna come up here as well?
I invited him.
He doesn't want to? Okay.
Do you wanna come up?
Yeah, I, I don't know what you have planned, but as a town moderator, it might be nice for you to be here to, if there's any questions? Did you just come in? Have you been here? Did you just walk in?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, so if people at, at home, Frank explains our town moderator, they, he appoints advisory committee members who are volunteers that review all of the articles that come in front of you. And then you make your recommendation for all of the warrants at town meetings, so. This is a good meeting to start working together, so.
Um, so we have a copy of the draft warrant, and thank you for sending that over after we spoke last week. Um, John Schlebeck, who's the Chair, and I met with Frank over the weekend to talk through some concerns that we shared about, um, the amount of time we have to get through the articles. Um, because really, the goal is to get through them before, by the end of the year, because then we really go into the budget discussion. Um, so we sort of charted out our opportunities to meet, given the holidays. It's lean. Um, so we're gonna make every effort to get through everything that's before us. And we just ask for sort of extraordinary cooperation in terms of helping us get people in front of us to answer the questions that we need to talk about. Um, tomorrow night will be our first meeting, and we'll talk about, um, availability for the AdCom to get together sort of at unusual times for us, rather than Wednesday nights. So we don't really have a sense for that yet, but that's what we're gonna try to do to get through what's before us.
Okay. Appreciate that, guys.
And I just wanna reiterate, you know, Kristen's viewpoint, and Jimmy, you and I spoke last week. Um, we've got a lean, we've got a lean committee, um, but we've got a lot of tenured folks on it. I think we have one new person. Um, we're committed to vetting these to the best of our ability, but there might become a point that we don't think we can get through something. And what we'll commit is we'll do the very best we can. But if there's any point that we don't think we're gonna be able to vet something enough to stand up in front of the town at the meeting in February, we will let you folks know first and foremost.
Okay.
Now, obviously, you know, looking through it, the ones that are probably gonna, um, take the most time and cooperation from the department heads and the boards is, um, the Home Rule petition.
Yep.
The liquor licenses, and obviously, the town hall.
So those would be the three big time-consuming ones?
Yes.
And I don't think that's any surprise to the board here. Yep. Okay.
So.
So you're, so you're meeting for the first night tomorrow night?
Mm-hmm.
And from that, I assume you're gonna set a schedule?
Mm-hmm.
So if you could share that with, with our town manager, and then we'll make ourselves available. I mean, most of these say selectmen on it. But either contract ones, you'd have town manager. There's one that says selectmen, but it's wat- more water and sewer.
Yep.
So we'll make, I think our role is to make sure you have the support, or we have the support at those board meetings to answer questions.
Yeah, and, and Bill and Mary Beth and, and Randy, who's really our, our partner in crime, if you will, does a great job of getting, you know, coordinating calendars and getting the folks in front of us when we need them and, and coordinating, you know, the separate meetings that we have with the liaisons from the advisory committee. So.
Chairman, we, we've already pledged our full support to the committee, um, of both to Kristen and Tracy and to John. I've spoken to John as over the weekend as well. Um, but we'll get through this. I mean, I, I think that we have, we have a lot of, uh, we have a lot of information we can give to you, but I think it's, it's not really that complex. I think we'll be able to make our way through it. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, one big happy family. All good, right?
It's lovely, bye.
Tonight. Yeah, no, there's certainly, there's a lot of work and it's a, it's a, basically, we're, we're juggling two things, the budget and the warrant articles back to back, so.
Kristen, how many folks are on the committee?
We have, um, I believe, ten.
Right now, yeah. So we need some more.
Yep.
All right, so let's make a pitch. Anyone out there who wants to be on the committee?
I've begged for a deal, so we'll take all the help we can get.
And Frank will correct me if I'm wrong, but the recommendation that I heard on Saturday is we not meet with less than seven. So six is quorum. Um, but for the levity, or the, um, weight of the things that we're talking about, we really should not meet with less than seven to get through this. So we'll make every effort to do that, so.
Okay.
I'd like to have all the votes, minimum of seven. You know, if they're going through the evening and, you know, somebody scoots out, they can continue to discuss.
Right.
But the votes, I'd like to have a minimum of seven.
Mm-hmm.
Chairman, a question was raised earlier than, uh, this, this evening, and I, and I don't know the answer to this one, because I don't know what the, if there's a limitation in a bylaw somewhere that I'm not aware of or a charter provision. If the committee wanted to meet on a holiday, um, is that in fact, uh, against any bylaws or local, local regulation or any sorts of state statute? I'm not aware of any state statute, but perhaps local regulation?
Not, not to my knowledge. You know, I know there've been meetings on Saturdays and Sundays of different committees and boards. I can't, to be honest, if you remember any holiday meetings off the top of my head.
Is there a particular date? I'm sorry, is there a particular date?
It's veteran's day, yeah.
We are, I mean, it is a slated meeting. The problem is, we have a lot of folks out of town, so I don't, you know, we don't wanna have one of the beefier discussions.
Yeah. Uh, one of the things we're gonna discuss tomorrow night with the board is, you know, the system of liaisons doing all of the upfront work, even before any of the articles are officially presented to the board, so that they can really give the, um, committee a real head start on all these articles.
And I, and I did speak to John a little week about indicating some of the point people for each of these articles. Um, I think mo- um, more than half will be myself and Mary Beth on, on some of them, so, um, so I will, will be able to get through those pretty quickly.
I'm, I'm, I'm confident they're gonna get through everything in order to have recommendations for, uh, town meeting. You know, there's some of the concerns, you know, really have to do with, um, the budget process interfering with it too, and that being delayed a little bit. And, and contracts, which you never know when are gonna be, um, agreed upon if they are.
Exactly.
We're working our way to get through that.
Right, there's nothing you can do about that.
Jim, is number, I know we discussed number, Article one, is that staying on? Is that the expectation?
I met with that group last Thursday with State Representative Barrows, and, um, it, it is staying on as written.
Okay.
So I think the discussion was after town meeting, where does it go at the state level, at, at a different level? So he's working on that. So, yeah, that, that is staying on there. So that's probably one article that is not directly related to staff and budget. So when that's set, when you know when you're gonna be reviewing that, if you could let me know and I'll reach out to the, that committee and see who wants to come for that as well.
Yeah, it's really a matter tomorrow night of talking about availability and when we can get people in, so, um, we'll let you know as soon as we do.
Perfect, okay. And as far as communication, I mean, this week, I've, I think I've spoken to everybody and their brothers and sisters about this. Um, just for the communication, and you've spoken with Bill. Uh, is there a one-point person from the AdCom if we need to communicate? Um, and we can assign one person from here to make it easier for you, or?
I think that would be John.
Chairman to chairman.
Yes, I, I think the most important discussion really is between chairman and the town manager.
Okay, perfect.
And, and with you, Jim, too, the chairman of the selectmen, um, advisory committee and town manager. I know John and, um, Phil have committed to talk at least once a week.
Yeah.
To keep each other abreast. And that's very important for the chairman to really know, not only for the special, but for the annual, what's coming up and how things are going. 'Cause we all know, you know, articles are anticipated and then drop off the table. And, um, the advisory committee in the years past has gotten a little frustrated when they reviewed articles that then get pulled.
Yes.
You know, so, you know, we wanna try to keep that on the minimum, even though it can't be helped at times, 'cause they're pulled for different reasons. Um, but, you know, just keeping ahead of the curve throughout the process.
Okay.
And communication is, is very important. You know, everyone likes to email and text. I tell people, pick up the phone and talk to the person. You know, I think that's the best way of communicating myself.
I'd agree more.
Okay, so for tonight, we, we still have to go, we have a draft on November third, so I have a feeling we might make some tweaks and changes. We'll get that back to the advisory committee with a new date on it, and that'll be the first formal draft that you've had. If they're meeting tomorrow night, I'm sure you have housekeeping to do, but you'll be looking at these articles?
Yes.
So will we have an opportunity from tonight, make those changes tomorrow, and get that to them before tomorrow night? And we'll scratch November third?
Yeah, the gen- the agenda for tomorrow is introductory and then town hall.
Okay.
And just for purposes of this week, John's out of town, so if you can send that to me, I'll get it to the committee tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, the point, I'm planning to attend a lot of advisory committee meetings. I don't know if other members of the board are as well, but, um, there is discussion, there is, uh, back and forth. If more than three are at that meetings, we have to post a selectmen's meeting? We do.
We do.
Okay.
But technically, John, you don't need to post it. As long as you're not discussing, you know, the issues, if you're just giving, providing information. 'Cause in the past, you know, when the board was three, it was not uncommon for two of the selectmen to be there.
Right. I'm, I'm just bringing it up so we don't get into deep waters here.
Right, you know, as long as you're not caucusing or discussing the issues, if you're just talking with the board, depends on what the real purpose is.
There was, there was some question that brought, was brought into, uh, into that about last, about a meeting last year. I just, I think you're, you're just expressing the word of caution here, right, John, and that?
Yeah, because, you know, they're gonna be working in a very compressed timeframe, and they could use input from what a selectman, I plan to be at most of these meetings. And, um, I know Ginny has been a regular attendee of AdCom meetings. I just didn't wanna get into a, a spot where we've violated an open meeting law.
So the safe route would be just for us to post the meeting?
That's what I would like to ask.
For the selectmen, and then just, and if they're there, then it's something, then there's no question about it.
Yeah, we'd got, we, you know, often we ask, 'cause you folks have been more intimately involved in some of this stuff before we, it gets to us. And we often ask your opinions as our elected officials. So we would like the ability for you guys to weigh in when we ask that and not be confined because the meeting isn't posted.
Yeah, so it, I, I just, as a, I mean, it's a nice thing to do, but I, I kinda disagree. If, if there's a majority there and we don't say anything, I think that what we went through last year with the Attorney General and, and all this stuff, it's still a violation, 'cause you've got a majority listening. And that majority comes back to the board and they can vote on something without, without the minority. So I think it is a violation, even if no one says anything, to have a majority there.
So you, you're the right thing, is to post it.
Posted.
Posted always.
Yeah, that's the safe, safe route.
Unfortunately, there's not enough time to post this for tomorrow night, correct?
It's all yours.
So, so we can limit ourselves to two and that's it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
We're gonna buck up, draw straws?
No, I'm going, I think. Are you going?
Don't fight.
We're done.
We know where, you know, the hot ticket in town.
Do you wanna go through the warrant at this point?
I, I think we have to, 'cause it's probably, I think there's a couple of questions you guys brought up that we'll go through as well.
Are you good with us?
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah. Frank's here in dual capacities tonight, so.
So kind of a broad question before we get into it. All of these articles were submitted, and then the process of having our town council review it and get back comments, has that been done yet?
Yes.
So this, November third?
November third is approved by town council.
Okay, so all of these, from a legal perspective, will fly through town meeting, okay? So Article one is the Home Rule petition for child abuse training. As I said, we, we, I met Thursday, and that is on it, and they're pretty, um, much behind it, so they'll, they'll be there at the, uh, process.
Jim, I, I heard that there was some, some, uh, language may need to be clarified, corrected. Um, I know it's the purpose of the meeting, but is there, you said it's good as written?
Good as written, yeah.
Okay, what were some of the issues that you thought might've needed correction?
Um, I, I think it's a little broader, discussing with, uh, with, uh, Representative Jay Barrows. I think we're looking forward, past, to get the House to support it.
Right.
Um, is it, is it too uncomfortable for them? Because when they focus on one town versus something that doesn't really apply to other ones, they may have a, they might wanna just throw it out. There's no language that we can change to get over that. Um, so I think it's one of these things that if the town votes for it and we're behind it, we go to the Attorney General, and they might not know what to do with it. And it's really not a language issue. It's more of a, um,
Uncomfortable.
Thinking outside the box issue.
Okay, so, so as written, um, all the proponents are just uncomfortable with it?
Yeah, the, the committee, the Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee is, is broad, and they've been working on this. This was their best fist, foot forward. And that's why I was asking, now the attorneys looked at it, they're okay with it and?
They've, they've given me like comments like, this article is acceptable as written and requires a simple majority vote. If, for each article, we have approval by town council as to the form and structure.
Okay. Article two is the liquor license requests.
Can I make a suggestion regarding Article two?
Sure.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we pull this, 'cause I don't, I don't think we're gonna be ready.
Why?
Um, we have, I just, I got the list the other day of the forty-three liquor license holders. We have to reach out, um, to the holders that have, um, beer and wine licenses that may wanna look, look at an all-alcohol license. We need to reach out to existing business owners. The Economic Development Committee has only met once, and we haven't even discussed this as of yet. We have another meeting tomorrow, and I don't think this is gonna be, we're even gonna be discussing this tomorrow. So the next meeting is December. I would, I would make a recommendation to wait the sixty days and put this on the, um, regular town meeting, so we can properly get the information. And we just, we go to the town for one request, rather than going for a partial request now and then a partial request in May. And the other reason is, the focus on this special town meeting should be town hall. We have an opportunity to finally do something with town hall, and that, and that's what the focus should be. I don't want this to, to muddy the waters or not be prepared.
Then you should be throwing out all the warrant articles, all the other warrant articles, if that's your philosophy.
No, I, well.
This wa- this warrant article is.
Some of the warrant articles, we can't throw out. I mean.
I don't think we should be throwing this one.
Just to clarify, uh, we did make a promise to the developer of Forbes Crossing that we would address this, uh, so that he could have a, um, a liquor license for the hotel and all liquor licenses for that development.
I think it's for two pad sites, is that correct?
Yeah.
And, uh,
But I, I think, I don't think.
And I, and I, he, he can't get going until we address this.
I don't, I don't think.
So my recommendation would be to carve out that particular node and deal with that. I know that if you, if you could package them all together and bring it as one package to the legislature, that would be ideal. Uh, I don't think, uh, given, given that this developer is, is waiting for this, and given that he can't get going without it, I think, and we made a prom- and we made a promise to him that we would deal with it.
I understand. Is, is?
I don't mind going in a somewhat multi-stage approach.
Is sixty days going to make all the difference to that development?
Yes, I think it will, because right now, what he's doing is lining up establishments that will use these, these licenses. What we, what we've always discussed, and this unfortunately with Sharon Watson's death, this has been, the process has been delayed a bit. What the process was going to be, and working with Sharon and, and the Planning Board, was to look at the business nodes.
Right.
In regard to, to liquor licenses. This is the first node that we actually have information about. I mean, one of, one of your concerns in the past was that we don't have enough information about these things.
Right.
This node, we have information. We have what is going in there, we have what the people are asking for.
Right, and I fully, I fully support that. My, my concern is, we're going to go, we're going to do a home rule petition for, for two licenses, and then with sixty days, we're going to go back for another whatever number of licenses, two, four, six, eight, whatever the number is.
At the annual town meeting.
At the annual town meeting. So, so the question is, when's the process for the home rule petition start? Is it immediately after the, the special, or is it sometime thereafter? So, what, my concern is that I don't want to start down the process on, on a home rule petition for, for two licenses, and then in thirty or sixty days, start the process for additional licenses, and you have two dueling tracks for, for licenses.
We won't have two dueling tracks. I mean, they'll be completely set, they'll be completely separate. And we will be following the process that was, was established before Sharon's untimely death. What we were going to do is look at the nodes and see what was needed. As an example, and we know what we need here. As an example of what we, the information that's coming in from the other nodes, we got a letter from somebody from the former Bradley's Plaza place. He wants something. We have information about, you know, Mechanic Street that we, you know, those people.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, but what I'm saying is, this one, we've got everything, it's cut and dry. It's, it's an easy, this is easy, and believe me.
I understand, I understand it's easy.
The State Legislature could kill less if you have multiple home rule petitions. Believe me, I know, I was up there. And present, we have already had multiple home rule petitions with Chestnut Green. We had Chestnut Green and another one at the same time.
Well, my.
So, there's no, believe me, there's no problem. And I think to, to pull this for, with, with this developer who is doing yeoman service fixing up that, that area, I think it's a disservice to, to him, and I think it's a disservice to the town. We're supposed to be doing economic development.
I know, Ginny, but you know what? We've, we've been sitting on these, on these liquor licenses since, I don't know, when we first looked at the warrant articles, was it July? And, you know, I don't, I want, I want, I want to accommodate him, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with a, a method to not keep going back to the town, well, we need two liquor licenses here, we need four liquor licenses here. Let's put, let's put a package together and says, look, this is, we, we've done the, we've reached out to the, to the current business owners. This is what we're, what we're looking for. These are the development opportunities in the different nodes, whether it's downtown, Route One, Bradley's. This is what we anticipate, and this is what we recommend.
But this one is all ready to go. We know what we want, we know what we need.
I understand that.
Let's start the process, because it takes a while. Let's start the process.
I, I understand it takes a while, and that's why, that's why I'm saying, does it make sense to do two and start that process? And then, and then do others? I'm just, I'm just making a recommendation.
Okay, so now we know how Ginny feels, and how Dave feels, and I, I get it, I know, I, I get it.
And I think this is a real disservice to that developer.
I understand, but what I wanted to do is get this side to see if, how you're feeling on this. And I'm not disputing or agreeing, I'm just saying, I, I understand the point.
You know, if you, if you take a look and say, what's the process going to look like, Dave, as far as getting this packaged up? Once you open it up, it's, it's, and I honestly, I'm not even sure it's going to be ready for the annual. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of consideration, there's a lot of competing interests. And that's, that's why I want it to be on this special, because if for some reason we get bogged down, folks can't participate and the process doesn't move along, this developer is stymied.
Yep.
And I really don't want to see that happen. I think we have a first-class developer here that needs us to get this done, you know, in order to get economic development down on that node. And if we trip ourselves up, and that's not an impossible thing to do, we'll, we may not be packaged up and ready for annual, and then this developer is left. And I really, I don't, I don't, that's not necessary, we can take care of it now.
And that's, and the last thing I want to do is, is trip him up. But at the same time, I don't want to, I don't want to jeopardize.
Future liquor licenses by keep going back in pieces.
I had a lot of discussions over the past week about that particular topic, and whether or not the way we're going to approach this and take it in pieces would in fact jeopardize that, and I have no evidence that the.
I have, I have a potential solution. We think when we are, the Economic Development Committee meets and all the different nodes, you're talking six, eight, ten licenses. We want two. So, say it's twelve, and we want two for there. Why don't we go with getting six at this meeting? Two dedicated to that, four that we have, that we can decide where, and then get the process going again in May.
This, this is, because you know what's going to happen? Town meeting is going to say, oh, we don't know where you're going to put this, we don't know.
Trying to come up with a compromise here.
No, no, but this warrant article answers the questions, will answer the questions for the Advisory Committee, it'll answer the questions for the town meeting. This is a very simple, simple request for these, and believe me, the State Legislature doesn't care how many home rule petitions you put in.
Well, what are we looking for for liquor licenses, at two?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have, I have, I've done some work on this one, because I knew this was going to be a little bit of a debate tonight about this issue. We actually met with Representative, the Representative this morning, talked about this very topic.
What Representative?
Jay Barrows.
Jay Barrows, yeah, for, for the town. And talked about the process of applying for liquor license. There wasn't, he couldn't give us an answer, yes or no, whether it was a good thing or a bad thing to apply on multiple occasions. See, it's because towns have done it before, and it goes both ways. There are a couple of interesting points that can be made here, though. Is that, you know that you need two for Forbes Crossing. And, and as I understand, they're also interested in a package store license as well. So, that would be three, if that was the case. The, the other thing is that there's one for Bradley's that, the Bradley's parking, store, parking lot, which is, is already a wine and, and beer store, wants to be a full package store license.
And that's in that same node?
Same node, if you will.
No, that's a different node. That's a different node. Foxville Plaza is a different node.
Fair enough, so, but, but they're in the same, roughly the same area, but, but understood, that they're looking at the same type of thing. And you also have the Chinese restaurant in the center of town that was looking for one. And then, that's on Mechanic Street. You also have one, Agent Fusion was looking for one as well. And then I also know that Normandy Campground was looking for one. Those are, those are known factors, that we know that those people are looking for licenses as we speak.
Let me ask you this, Bill. If, if they have a present beer and wine license, and they want to turn that one, I guess they turn that in?
Yes.
And they apply for all alcohol?
Yes.
What happens with that beer and wine?
That beer and wine would then become available for someone else to use.
It comes back to the Board of Selectmen, we will reissue it.
So, it creates some opportunity, is what it does, when you look at it from that perspective. So, to, you know, we also know, I know for a fact that there is an interest from Route One to get some. There's also an interest from perhaps the theater in the center of town to get one. That's just speculation. The fire station, we know, is an interest, that we know that's going to be coming up. So, you've got at least twelve that I know of at this point in time, that are, that are potentials. Ten that are, that I think are real, two are just somewhat, certainly on the radar screen. So, the question is, because, and I think the only way you can answer the question of whether or not, how much, how much of an impact it's going to be in terms of not going forward on these two licenses right now, is to ask the developer. He's here tonight, and I, because I knew this question would come up, and to see what kind of a logistical issue that creates. So, if, if the Board wants to hear from the developer on that, on this very point, just so you're clear on what this means, then I think now will be the time to do that.
And what's the timing on the home rule petition?
The home rule petition would be filed right after that, but we also know that Mansfield, I think, asked for some, and they took it, and they still, they still haven't acted on it, and that was like ten months ago.
No, they did, they passed it.
Uh, not according. They did.
Yeah, that's where I have the, I have the language.
Okay.
That we can just, we can just substitute Foxborough for Mansfield, and, and I have the, the language at hand.
Fair enough, I just, I was at this morning, the Representative didn't know that answer, so, so I'm just.
I got it from his office.
Okay, well, that's, I'm just telling you what he told me, so, so.
So, maybe you're right, Bill, if, if we hear it from the developer, we might put it in a different perspective. Do you have a few minutes to share with us the, your schedule and your plans?
Thank you very much. Once again, I'm Jeff Salatin, and thanks for letting us come in here this evening. I think you probably assumed that our answer is that we'd like to have these licenses so that we can wrap up the leases on our pad sites as soon as possible. We're having quite a bit of, of activity. Once we announce that we're going to be building one hundred and thirty-nine room Hampton Inn Suites and have three pad sites, we've had a tremendous amount of, of, of velocity in demand for the pad sites. I can tell you that we're having conversations with restaurants that look like Applebee's, including Applebee's. And without being able to name, one of the highest steak chop houses in the country has been at our site a couple of times, a name that, that we're very pleased to just have a dialogue with. We don't have a deal with them, I don't want to mislead you, but we do have very significant interest from them. So, the sooner that, you know, we know that we can provide a license, the more productive and, and the, and the better the ultimate result will be in being able to secure these, these tenants. These licenses would only be used for family-style or fine dining-style restaurants. There's not any entertainment or, or bar-type operations that we're, we're even thinking about talking to. So, it would be a tremendous benefit to us and a detriment if it was put off. We are, we, we closed on the, on the asset, we own the real estate. We have had a tremendous amount of support from all of your boards. And we're nearing the end and about ready to put a shovel in the ground. I would anticipate, if everything goes as, as we see it, that before Christmas, we should be finished, before the holidays, I should say, we should be finished with the entire town permitting process and beginning demolition as early as the winter, and break ground and come out rocking and, and, and building to break the spring.
Thank you, appreciate the, the update.
If I could also add a few things. One, I just want to clarify, the hotel will not have a liquor license. We've stated that from the get-go. As Bill said, there's two pads for the restaurants, and that'll be where the liquor licenses will be located. When Jeff initially approached me, I think it was late winter, early spring, about representing them and going through the process, he indicated that there were going to be restaurants here, and I told him that there weren't any alcohol licenses available. So, early on, we approached the Administration to let them know that we'd be bringing this request forward at some point. Once the process with the Planning Board and Board of Appeals and so on started going, I kept dialogue open with the Administration, and during the summer, sent this board, you know, a letter, and we came in early in September to discuss it. So, we always wanted to be on the fall town meeting. Bill let me know that he thought that the town meeting would be pushed off because of Town Hall. We understood that reason, we're fine with it. We really like to get in before the annual for a number of reasons, so that we can explain to any tenants that there are liquor licenses available, so we can sign them up. Also, because Legislature, if it's in the May town meeting, which is a three-month difference, they go on this summer break. So, for example, when we went forward with Chestnut Green, it didn't get signed until late in the fall and in the winter, because during the summer, they didn't do anything, and was put on the side during the fall. So, what we're hoping is, is if we can get it done in February, that we can get it signed by Legislature before they take this over recess so that the pads can really get started working on. Because until we have a commitment from a tenant, they, they won't start going forward with any of the pads. The hotel will be started, and the work on the existing structure that's staying will be moved forward. But with regard to the pads, they won't be moving forward that until they know exactly who will be going in there, because each structure is designed for the tenant.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
So, based on what I just heard, I rescind my remarks. But I, I still think we should, we should talk to the people that we know that are interested and try and get as many on, on this warrant as we can then.
I might, having said everything we just said, my concern about that is what it, what it might do to the, the concern is like we just heard from, from the AdCom about having too many things before them. So, I mean, having, having two requests, so that you can actually have the additional time, the new town plan will be on the first week in December. At least have another month to actually go through that process and to, to actually work with her on a couple of these items, where we can put some priority on this, and try, and have the committee, have the Economic Development Committee weigh in even further. I, I think you'd be well-served to consider a second request. That's, that's my opinion, personal opinion. And we can work with the Legislature to get that through as much as possible, because I, I think the question is how, how you package that up and really place the emphasis on economic development as your, as your emphasis for the downtown and other, and other nodes, expanding that possibility. I think the Legislature will be very, pretty responsive to that.
Any further discussion?
So, for what we're looking at on this, for the two Xs is two liquor licenses for this, right?
We're actually for two restaurants and one package store. I think the existing article, the one I saw from last week, only had the two restaurant, all liquor licenses.
The one, the draft is, it's always had XX, I don't think there was any.
But the, it does state that there are alcoholic beverages to be drunk under the premises, so those are liquor licenses for the restaurants.
Yeah, so.
So, we would have to alter the language.
Yeah, and I remember, I'll just weigh in on the.
Can I just finish on that train? With, with that, I mean, I'm fine with your analogy and all that, it makes sense. I do want to really push for May to get everything else done, but if we have an existing business in town that is telling us they want a, a full liquor license, and we're pushing to get one approved a half a mile away, but we won't approve one for him, it's not sending a good message to our existing businesses. So, I would be fine saying, let's go with two for the restaurants on this, and then package everything else, and really have it a priority to get it all done once and for, you know, for a while anyways, for the, the May town meeting. That's just my recommendation.
So, having sat a few months before last May town meeting, we had this discussion, I think, remember, at the, it was at the high school auditorium? And we were going to put out, let's ask for, and it was uncomfortable because nobody knew how much to ask for. So, that was over a year ago, and albeit with Sharon passing and stuff, it, it kind of stops. But I don't have a lot of faith that with it. But I don't have a lot of faith that with it being November right now, we can reach out to the businesses and get a, a common approach for twelve liquor licenses or ten. I think, I just, it's blown my mind that we, all of a sudden, a population of nineteen thousand people need twelve more liquor licenses, that people are asking for it. Of course, people are going to ask for it. Doesn't mean that you can just, and I don't know why, I'm just looking at you when you're saying that.
But the master plan is supposed to guide us to what was really needed and the positioning of it. So some of these existing licenses, it's, you know, where they're located might be geographically, you know, they might be in the wrong spots.
Yeah.
You know, that's where the planning board was going to guide us.
Yeah, there's a lot of work to do. And I just, between now and May, if we're working, you know, if, I'll tell you, giving more than this little chunk to advisory committee, it's not going to go well. And I've spoken, they're, they're, over their heads already with it.
That's my sense, yeah.
We've got a developer that, and I think everyone's in agreement, he can hold up a plan that's been embraced by all the neighbors, zoning board, planning board, conservation commission, that process, that says, here's a good use of the property. It's redeveloping, and here's two pads, and this fits. And I don't think you're going to get any opposition. Would it be nice to say three, four, five, or six? But I think we're just throwing numbers on there, because three is better than two, maybe. But I think this is very sellable to a town meeting. Much more than that is not going to fly in February, and I don't think we have the wherewithal to get it all together for May. So I just hate to say, oh, we're going to get something in May, because we, over a year ago, we kind of failed on it.
That was the whole idea of using the node model to make the plans. Okay, we do, this is the first node. Then we move on to the next one. Do that, and then we move on to the next one. And whatever's ready for the Maytown meeting, then that's what is presented. It could all be ready for Maytown meeting. It could, only some could be ready, but at least it's progress. We have been talking about this for three years. You know, this is the beginning of it. Let's go with this.
The one, the one thing I will add to this discussion is that I think we're going to really need to do something in May, primarily because if the, if the fire station sells, and we have a developer really wants to push forward and get something done there, they're going to be looking for a license for that this time. I think that's almost the close...
Well, you listen to the developer, nobody is going to want to develop anything if they can't fully utilize it. And let's face it, in today's day and age, it's a bar, you know? So...
Well, it's a high-class restaurant.
Well, that's what I mean.
You don't need liquor to sell it, but it does help, but...
Certainly does, too.
You know, but I, I mean, we're kind of getting off track...
We'll give them a coffee license, then.
You're not going to put a ten thousand, twelve thousand, well, that's a different discussion.
But you're going to have a hundred and thirty-five-room hotel with no eating facilities in the hotel. Guests have to eat. And also, remember, in that area, we have Meditech coming up with five hundred people working at Meditech. You know, we, I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of people who will enjoy the amenities of that plaza. Let's give it to them.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's supposed to be like that.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, is it just two, or is it, is it a little bit more? Maybe not all that we, that we think we need, but is it some, some combination of the, of what we know of, at Forbes Crossing, plus what we, what we know is pretty definitive, you know, between downtown and existing license holders that are looking for a change?
This is definitive downtown and the other places, it's like, oh, yeah, it would be nice, because we haven't figured that out yet. This, this has been figured out.
One thing that is interesting is that you can start looking at some of the combinations of these things. I mean, for instance, like, we know, like, for instance, I don't know that Normandy Campground wants a full liquor license. I think they may just want like a, a package, they may just want a package license, you know, as opposed, so we need, we need more work on these, there's no question about it. This, this one's clear. We know this one's clear as to what the need is. So I, I'm inclined to agree with the comment that this is clear. The other one's going to need a little more work, and I think Dave, Dave's point about, you know, let's take a little bit, look a longer look at that.
Do you have any others existing businesses that are clear? Like, we, if you're applying for licenses, we want this.
Well, Asian Fusion has, has wanted a license for a long time. I mean, they, they've had, they have a current beer and wine license.
Yeah, they took the beer and wine license, because that was always available.
That was always available. But they've been asking one for a couple of years now.
So do we, if there's a business like that, that has a great track record, and they're doing all the right things, and we're going to be asking for two for a new business, can we at least look at saying, okay, let's get one or two or whatever for those businesses at the same time? Because it's the same thing. It's a business here or a business there that's all ready to go.
No, because then it's going to be, the waters are going to be muddied for advisory committee.
But they have an existing track record of...
And, no, 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 and, and for town, and for town meeting.
I just think we're taking businesses that are already in town, that, you know, have a great track record, and they want something, and we're saying, you're not important, we want this guy, because we like him better.
No, we're not saying that.
No, because this is part of an economic development package.
And, and I mean, some of these are close to downtown. I mean, we've been beating the bush.
Right, and that's the next node.
Well, why, I mean, if I was in, if I was in node number four, and you started on one, everybody else would, would have it. So I mean, if we have stuff ready to go there, and we have stuff ready to go in the center of town, what is the difference? There is none.
And then, and then the question is, does the fire station become more valuable at auction if there's an available all-alcohol license?
Well, at least it's on the warrant, because it won't be, they're voted at that point.
Right.
Tough question. I, I can see it both ways.
No, and I, trust me, I want to, I want to get you your two liquor licenses as soon as we can, but I also don't want to slight the existing businesses that have been standing there, wanting them and wanting them and want them, and they're paying taxes and all that, so...
Well, can we, can we do this? Can we commit to at least putting forth at least two, and see what else we can vet out, and work with the AdCom, and see what they're comfortable with going forward?
Dave, let me tell you something. I met, I happened to bump into the AdCom people the other night, and you know what they told me? They told me they're pulling this because they don't have time to vet things. They feel that they are under a lot of pressure. You add something to this thing, and they're going to say, you know what? We don't have time, and they're going to pull it.
You know what?
And I, I just don't think...
Depending on, depending on the information and how we package it to them, I mean, we just, we just can't give them and say, oh, we want, we want five licenses, and these are the places. You've got to give them some background information to make it, to make it easy for them to review. You don't want them to have to do all the, all the legwork. You want to give them a complete package and be able to make a decision based on the information that you give them.
This is a complete package for Forbes Crossing?
I agree with you, Dave, but November third, when they're meeting November fourth and already struggling, this discussion should have been happening months ago. It's just not fair to drop it now. We're, see, we're all getting all agitated, and I think we're going to kind of just throw it over tomorrow and see what happens.
Yeah.
This should have happened months ago. You know, if...
No, it shouldn't.
And, and, you know, in fairness to the businesses, yes, they're existing and it would make it easier, but this is town government. We, we work with volunteer boards. It's tough to get any volunteer board these days. I think we embrace the AdCom as much as we can right now, help them. Putting anything more than two is not going to do us any favors, not going to do them. And then, and then we end up, might end up with none.
Frank, just to be clear, while we're going to approve this warrant article, but the developer, the petitioner, it's, it's two...
Full restaurant liquor licenses and one full package store license.
That's, that was part of the original...
That was in my letter that I sent in August.
So that's what we...
That's what this article is, though, right?
This article is just two licenses.
This is just two?
Yeah.
But I think, I think they're requesting two all alcohol and one package.
That's correct.
But why is it the package one?
Yeah, the application, when, I remember, because it was in the back of my mind, was, I was not ready to support a package store without any discussion or, so I know it was brought up, but I think it was, we're doing this as a site plan, we've got this square footage in the back, maybe it will be liquor store, maybe not. But I think that's why it's not in here, because it hasn't been brought forward.
Well, he had been discussing that location that you described with somebody that's very interested in it, and that's been ongoing throughout. But again, there's no full package store license available, so nothing can be done. But my original letter, and as I've been discussing with the administration from the beginning, from the very beginning, we looked for two restaurants and one package store, knowing that you don't always get everything you want, you know? But requesting that, thinking that's in the best interest of the site, so it can be a good going concern.
If I could address the package license for a moment, when this shopping center was originally built, when Central Street was the, was the original Route 140, there was a supermarket in, in the building, and it's very deep. It's much deeper than a typical retailer can use, and we've had a conversation with a, a very prominent package store operator, and of course, we had to tell them that, you know, there is no package store licenses available in town. And so that's why we made the request with Frank. If we don't use it within a period of time, I don't think there's any issue with us relinquishing it back to the town, so it's not one that's committed at a property that's not being used. But it would be very, very helpful for us if, if we could, if we could do that. We're presently building a, a twelve thousand, four hundred and forty-square-foot package store in another, in another shopping center, and it works really nicely when you have these former old supermarkets that are so deep. So it would be very, very helpful. We don't have a, a deal, though, in our pocket. I would not want to misrepresent that. So if that got delayed, that one license till the next time we do this, I mean, is that kind of... It would just delay our option to have that kind of dialogue with somebody. If, I would prefer if we could incorporate it into the warrant, and then we could relinquish it back to the town. If we don't, if we don't use it in a reasonable period of time, I would suggest that that might be a good option. And reasonable period of time might be like twenty-four months, so it's not tied up at our, at that property, when somebody else could use it somewhere else.
Well, the thing is, these licenses, because they're being the nodes, would be node-specific.
They're dedicated. Well, we'd love to have it, but what I'm suggesting is, even though it's, if there's any way that can happen, you know, we don't need to tie it up if it's not being utilized.
Okay.
The language, the language of this article is specific to Forbes Crossing at this point in time, which means we would have to do some significant rewrite of this language to include that at this point, which I'm not sure we have the time for tomorrow night. And I, I don't, not that I, it's entirely possible, but I don't want to say for sure.
It could be rewritten so that the package store is specific to Forbes Crossing, so it could be added, but specific to the site.
But I guess the challenge there, Frank, is if it doesn't, if it doesn't work...
Right.
Then it's, then it's stuck there, and you can't go anywhere else.
Well, that's a challenge with, pretty much...
And the other thing I'm thinking, Frank, and, so at the end of the day, at Forbes Crossing, with this, you're going to have six liquor licenses, and then you've got somebody that's just asking us at the Old Bradley's to extend their one liquor license for a full. It just doesn't seem right at the eleventh hour, where you don't have a tenant, you know, I think everyone's embraced the pads, because it's a restaurant. The large liquor store is something that I'm not prepared to jump on at the eleventh hour and say, this is good, send it over to the AdCom.
Well, you can't have a tenant without the license available, so no tenant's going to sign anything. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg situation.
And believe me, I mean, you also purchase the property in anticipation of development and permits and tenants, and it's a process. So if, if the worst thing that happens is it gets in a broader discussion for next May with everybody else, you know, it's a little less, hate to use the word greedy, but you've got two, six in that area, when someone's struggling, you know, a mile away for, for one, just doesn't sit right with me.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm prepared to, I, I think I'm in favor of Article Two as written, with two liquor licenses for the two pads from the permitted development that we have right now. I don't think we have to make motions on everyone, but we've got to move something forward tonight.
Yeah. I mean, if, just so we don't hold, hold that development up, it's fine. It's fine, but I'll, I'll commit to getting to work and, and work with the other business owners to, for, for information for, for a Maytown meeting.
I think it'll be a lot smoother for everybody if we do it that way.
I'm very comfortable. Thank you.
That's fine. And we'll just keep the dialogue open for the possibility of a package store in the future. Okay?
Thank you very, very much.
Is everybody okay with two?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a protocol that we get this done.
And no other changes on the language that we're seeing?
We've promised this lan, we've promised AdCom a complete article, not having the right move.
Plus, they would have to go back to the council.
Yes, they would.
For rewrite, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Good night.
Article Three is the middle managers department heads and clerical employees contract. Any changes, suggestions?
No, I mean, just, just on all three contracts, they're still in process. We're making, I think, very good progress on all fronts. I fully anticipate within the next few weeks, we could have resolutions on at least two out of the three.
Okay.
So...
Just a bit of history, Bill. We've had contracts that have come, have been wrapped up and given to AdCom three days before a town meeting.
They don't happen. I, I've never, in fact, I was the one who imposed the rule, that actually was adopted by the town back in Dedham, that it has to be at least two weeks before, before a town meeting.
Yeah, let them have two meetings on it.
Yeah.
And, and we've, again, we've, we've gone through some rough patches with a lot of this happening, and we have made commitments to AdCom that we won't bury them, and also to, to the folks in the town.
Yeah, it's not the right thing to do.
So that we want contracts to be properly vetted, we have to give them time.
For their, for AdCom's consideration, can we put a deadline if these aren't met by December twentieth?
I think the AdCom will give us a deadline.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm just saying, if we, I mean, what's the harm if we do these now or in May? I mean, are they going to be, are they really close to being resolved?
Well, we're required to put them forward if they get done at the next town meeting by statute.
Okay.
All right, so that's the reason why we're pushing for them now, because we, we fully anticipate at least two out of three to be done. I think all three will be done, personally, but that's just my take on it.
Will be done by the end of the year?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think...
I definitely think two will.
Yeah, two out of the three and possibly middle part of January at the most. I think we've got plenty of time.
Out of before, it's a police contract, and this is the, the money contract, not the, the other one that's been kicking around. Article five, so that's fine. Article five, that's the board of library employees contract.
That's all set, ready to go, right?
No.
Oh, yeah, but very, very close.
Article six, removal of the police chief position from civil service.
This is one where, and Mary Beth can give you, has made a few points on this as well, but this is one where, this is strictly a timing issue, because as we know, the chief is nearing retirement, mandatory retirement age. So in order for us to proceed with a, with a recruitment process, we need to know what process, what direction we can go in. Now is the time to do this, if there's going to be a vacancy in the position. So I think this is the, as good a time as we can put it in and get it, get it resolved now. We're trying to work with all parties associated with this issue to try to make sure that everybody's in agreement with it.
Do you think this is going to be a controversial one from the...
I don't, I don't know that it will be. I, I know that there'll be some concern, you know, from the, from the rank and file of the department to make sure that, because obviously, they, they want to try and participate and be involved in the process. So I think there'll be, you know, there may be some, some controversy at that level, but on a, on a broader scale, this one really makes all the sense in the world to me, and I hope others as well, that we want to cast the widest net possible to get the very best candidate. I mean, this has only happened once in every thirty-three, forty, thirty-four years in this community.
Yeah, we did tackle this, and I'm thinking, ten...
Two thousand and five was...
Ten years ago?
Yeah.
Okay. And was controversial, and failed. And I think times have changed. I think people recognize that the chief is retiring, and this is an opt, you know, an opportune time to deal with it, whereas in the past, it wasn't.
And, you know, and Mary Beth's been researching this for quite a bit, quite a bit of time now, and it's, the number of communities that are actually civil service, that have civil service chiefs, has diminished significantly. has diminished significantly over, over recent years. So we're, we'd be following the, the trend if we, if we went in this direction. And it, this is no disrespect to any of the internal candidates. We want them to, to be involved and be part of the process. And, you know, we've only, we've already demonstrated that if, even with a large process, we still end up, sometimes end up with a local candidate. So I, I don't think that there's any, we're not, we're not diminishing their, their involvement. We just want to be sure that we're looking at the very best candidates for this process.
Okay, Article seven, the CIP water main. Now, this is something that came to us last meeting two weeks ago. Why, why is that a board of selectmen article?
It really, it really should be, well, it's, it's a public works issue, but, so really it should be, it should be water. I think we'd want a water and sewer board.
I'm, I'm not directing, I'm just, it seems.
Yeah, we should probably should be water and sewer, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's a good catch.
My, my inclination last time was it was too late to put on without, it was just kind of thrown in there without good reason, and I don't have the background. But can you explain it, that they, the, the funds are there, they just need to be appropriated through this article?
Right, they already, the funding is already available, it's just that we can't, they can't, they can't use that money without authorization from town meeting.
So why does it say the town will vote to raise and appropriate?
Because it's, it's a transfer from available funds and/or transfer from.
That's just standard language.
It's just, that's standard language for appropriation of funds. And the money's actually in the water, the water sewer funds.
But it's in the water sewer capital fund.
Right.
So when someone stands up to present, it just, it seems like it needs to be the water and sewer to.
I agree, I agree, that's a good catch.
Article eight, the town hall. Still on it?
We're building a town hall.
Yeah, really. Is that news?
All right, and that's the one article, obviously. I think you, you've been working with Tracy and, and keeping her up to speed.
And Bill Yuckner is, is absolutely the lead person on that, and his committee will, will stand up and address that.
In, in bigger picture, I talked to John Schorbeck last week, early this week on it, and the question or the opportunity for argument and debate, this is on the funds, but if someone wants to debate square footage and, you know, the, the process that's been going on, who's prepared to walk the AdCom through what's been done before, what's appropriate? Or maybe it's all appropriate, I don't know.
That would be Bill Yuckner, he'll, he'll do all that. Because he's been, he's been involved since day one, he's already gone through all those issues. I know that this debate over, you know, there's different views as to how this should go forward, but the, at the end of the day, it's the architect, it's the, it's the OPM, and it's the building committee that have responsibility for this project. And so I'm respecting their space in this.
Yep.
I'm asking them to, you know, when they have issues to come to me, when they, when they need to. And so far, they've done that on a couple of occasions. But generally speaking, I'm, I'm guided by what they're, what they're telling us. And I know that there is differing viewpoints on that, but, but I'm, I'm guided by what they're saying.
Okay, so the big, I mean, this is to, again, raise and appropriate, so there's going to be a dollar value?
Yes.
Right now, they're transitioning to get the construction documents out to bid.
Right.
And then the bids back by a certain time, so that dollar amount's not going to be known until?
Till sometime in.
January?
Jan, January, early February.
So what is, what's the AdCom going to be looking at until then?
So what they'll do is they'll, they'll look at all the processes that's been done up to this point, and they'll, they'll explain everything to them on next, tomorrow night, they're going to explain, Bill's going to explain all that process. And then in terms of the bid process, he'll explain, give them the time, timeframe, when that's going to go out, and they'll know those, know those numbers. And they'll also give them some indication of where the estimates are at this point.
Okay.
So as far as the, so the way I envision this to happen is that this article will be, will be your enabling article for authorization to spend. The motion will carry the actual number in it, and the motion can be done right up until the last minute.
So their deadlines for the bids to come in?
Um, I don't know the answer to that, John.
Because last time I talked to Bill, he was hoping to get everything in by the end of the year, probably early, so that.
Well, he, he wants to bid it before, I think, right, right before Christmas, and, and then they have to sort of commit after Christmas and into January.
Okay. When I talked to him, he was hoping they would, they would all be in by the end of December, but he's off by a few weeks, okay.
May, maybe a few weeks. I, I could be, I could stand corrected on that, but I, that was my understanding.
Well, we'll, we'll hear tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's right.
Just bear in mind, construction costs are up 18% since February.
Yeah.
With no sign of slowing down.
Right. Even though it, there are indications that the economy is starting to slow, the, the challenge is that a lot of the builders that were operating a few years ago shrank during, during, during the slowdown, and it, and it just never grew again. So, so there's only a, a limited number of developers actually working, and they're all working right now.
Yep, seen it.
Okay, so let's, if, if everyone's okay with these eight articles, let's make a motion to change the date from November 3rd to November 4th. And I think the only change was to change XX on Article two to number two.
Number two, and water and sewer.
Water and sewer on Article seven to replace the board of selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
Any, any other changes we talked about on the way?
No.
It was kind of sounded like a motion, but someone would make that motion.
I make a motion that we change the date on the draft warrant to November 4th, all right? And change Article number two to two liquor licenses for Foxfield Plaza, and change Article number seven to be the water and sewer representing it instead of the board of selectmen.
And I'll continue that and see if we accept the rest of the warrant as written.
Okay, very good. Motion made, second to further discussion on the articles? All those in favor?
I, I seconded that, just off the record. I meant, I, I continued it, but I also.
Gotcha, second, second to John. And guys, thanks, and you guys, I know we throw these articles on and say contract, but I know there's a ton of work that goes behind all of this stuff, so appreciate it.
Thank you. We need a separate motion to close the warrant, or did we just do it?
I think you do.
Yeah, I, I would ask you to do that, I would ask you to close it.
Okay, so now that the warrant is over with AdCom, let's take a motion, entertain a motion to close the 2016 February town warrant. Someone make that motion, I guess.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to definitively close the 2000, the special town meeting 2016 warrant.
Second.
Motion made, second by Dave. More discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, Dave, we, we tied.
You've been doing all the other stuff.
Yeah, you can do that, yeah, you can do it, sign it later on.
You have a, a hand up in the audience.
Oh, yes, yeah.
For your new Foxborough reporter, just for clarification, if you close the town meeting warrant today, why did you change the date from the 3rd to 4th?
Because there's a date on here for the 3rd already. So it more of a clerical, when it goes over there, I don't want them to be looking at the 3rd because it's going to have two different versions.
Okay, so, but the, it's finalized for the 3rd though, so.
Well, we finalized it on the 3rd, but we put the 4th date.
It's just like a.
There's already a 3rd on it.
They have to, they have to.
Accepting a new draft.
Okay, they'll, so they'll accept the new draft on the 4th.
Yeah, so when they look at it, it'll say the 4th.
Excellent, that's, that's what I wanted to figure out.
It's like the first day of school for, for the AdCom. All right, oh boy, we've got. Community compact discussion.
Community compact.
We started that, you want to finish that?
So the, the last time we had this conversation, the board wanted to take a little more time to, to think about any other issues that they wanted to possibly put forward. The, the two that sort of gained the greatest amount of traction staff-wise are the, the financial policies and the IT issues. If there are others, we'll, we'll certainly, you know, bring those along as well. But I don't know that there's, I mean, if they, I just, I'm anxious to get going on this only because you can see by the advantage of having that, being involved in that process, you know, Mansfield picked up a huge grant the other day. So, and we're, and we're not, we're not even in that, in that mix at this point. And not that we're not really ready for that at this point, but I just want to get, get going on that process.
I think those are good choices. We, we talked about building a foundation, and these are foundational issues.
Right.
And I think we also talked about not biting off more than we can chew.
Right.
And I think Randy is keen to get at the financial policies. And I think, you know, townwide, all of our buildings, schools, you know, taking best practices for information technology is, and, you know, honestly, we're behind. So I think that would be a, a key spot to focus.
Mm-hmm. And the, the last thing we discussed last time was getting Paige Duncan involved in it early. I know she doesn't start till a second, but the more excited she gets early on, the better with these.
We've got a packet started for Randy, things to do.
Okay, any other additions or subtractions or changes to the compact?
No.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, we'll get that going, thank you.
Town council policy, that's something that, in, in our packet, there was basically whose authority it, it is to hire town council on behalf of residents and different boards, how it goes about. And there's actually an application in the back that goes to town manager office. And the, I asked for this to be on it only because the last couple of items were appeal items, either appealing the town decision or the town appealing somebody else's decision. And I did get some call from some, some residents saying, who's spending the money, how's it going? Is it just a willy-nilly, you know, to process? So you, you want to just kind of give an overview of?
Right, I'm, I'm happy to do that, Mr. Chairman. The, the, the selectmen have a very good policy in place as to how town council is authorized. And it's a procedural process where the, the application is made to the town manager's office. More often than not, what happens is that an illegal action comes to our attention, we review it internally, see if there's any other way to address it. If it's a, if it's, if clearly illegal action, we will, it goes one of two routes. It goes to town council or it goes to our insurance company, the either one, to see where, where, where we have to take the, the most immediate action. Labor council is something that is used primarily from our office, you know, Mary Beth and I use, use them almost exclusively. However, if there's issues that, again, come to the attention of a department head or that require further attention, more often than not, we can deal with it with the grievance issues on the local level. If it turns into an arbitration type of situation, obviously legal council gets involved. Terminations, difficult legal issues, on labor, on labor type issues are ones we always consult with town council for labor council purposes. We have two, we have town council and we have labor council. We also have special counsel in some cases. Special counsel in the water and sewer department for a very specialized type of work. And town council is more of the general nature, handling issues on a more general, like the, for instance, the warrant gets reviewed by town council. And town council also has some specialties themselves. They deal with, they've dealt with some conservation commission matters because they have a specialty type council. That's Kate Conley, who's been very specialized in that area, has been very helpful in that area. The zoning board of appeals, when, when the case was appealed on that case, the issue there is that we are protecting the decision-making process of the ZBA. That's, that's the integrity of the process. More often than not, in a case like that though, the, the council for the advocate, who was ever advocating for the permit, is the one who will take the lead in that council, in that defense, and that we will serve as secondary council in that role. So we don't spend a lot of money in that, it's more just a, it's, we, we follow appearance to protect the interests of the, of the individual board members and their decision-making process. But the, the decision itself, the debate of the decision is usually done through the advocate who, who filed the, filed the permit. So I'll be honest with you, that there's not a lot of requests that come for, use the town council for, because I think I've had a total of three, and I have those requests as well in my file. But more often than not, they're, they're administrative type requests, more, more than they are actual legal cases. And that's the good news, that we have a lot of legal cases that we've had to be involved with over, in the short time that I've been here, but they have been over the years. So that's a summary.
So the, the, the role of the selectmen, one of the roles is settle lawsuits for the town on behalf of the town. So at what point where an application comes into town manager, you, you authorize it?
Yeah.
And then it proceeds, it's a litigation. So the crossroads of, of throwing bad money after good, who makes that decision that says enough's enough? I get to bring it back to my board? And, and how do we get updated on that? So we're not surprised?
Yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't happened yet, so, I mean, I haven't run into that situation here personally, but just so you know, the process that I use is, in fact, before even have council engaged in this, I say, I try to look for, what are we looking here cost-wise? What's this, what's our outward type of exposure on this case? You know, how, what are we looking at in terms of cost? I mean, insurance council's a little different story because we have a little less involvement in that because they, they pretty much run that process for us. But when it gets to a point where we're looking to a settlement, of course, they'll, they'll come to the board and look for, for a resolution. But if I get to, if it gets to a point where I'm not comfortable with a, with a, with a, with a case that's proceeding and it's costing us a lot of money, and I don't see an end in sight, that's the time I'll be, I'll be talking to you and say, hey, what do we want to do here? But it hasn't happened since I've been here yet.
And, and the reconciliation of the budget for the council?
Yeah.
With, with respect to the general budget and the special, different budgets for different departments? How is that all reconciled?
There's a, there's a whole, we have a separate budget for, we have a budget for town council that has sub, sublines for special council. The, the special council for water and sewer is primarily paid out of the water sewer fund. It's not paid out of our general council budget. But we have general council and labor council paid out of town council budget.
Okay. And I, I don't want to be asking, I just have one other question. So you've got a, you have a board of five.
Yeah.
We have town council, and in the past, different members, different boards have the ability to go to town council, some years we didn't, some years we were protecting ourselves. Some direction to us on how you would prefer if one of us wants to go to council? Do they go to the chair, the chair goes to you, they go directly to the council, or do they fill out a form?
It says, it says in your, it says that individual members of, they, that it's, your, your policy specifically says the individual members of the board recognize that their authority under the statute of the town manager has exercised through the entire board acting as a body in a lawful meeting. So therefore, if, if, if an individual has a request to go to use town council, they should come to a board meeting and, and request that authority to do so.
At a board meeting.
At a board meeting, right. So the individual members of the board understand they do not exercise authority as individual members to go to council. So if there's an issue that comes up, you should, you know, my advice to you would be go to, to request that, that authority from your board.
So put it, have it on the agenda as an, as an item? Or, or an executive item maybe, if that's the case?
Yeah, I would think it would have to, depending on the circumstances, be an executive item.
Yeah, the usually conflict of interest item.
Yeah.
Right.
You guys okay with that policy and the, of the stuff that's going on at town with respect to council?
Yeah, I know, this, this policy's been looked at a number of times over the years, and I think it's, it's pretty solid. Very comfortable, yeah.
All right, thank you for putting that together.
Yeah, and there are instances where there's an exception to that, and I just sort of want to be clear about that. If you, if you have a situation that says without seeking a vote of the board, individual members of the board may contact town or labor council directly if the following conditions are met. One is the individual member seeking counsel on a conflict of interest issue or personal liability issues involving a board member personally. And the second, the board member must then advise the town manager for purposes of building coordination. So now, if they're doing that, if you're doing that, just let us know, so we, so we know that that's, so we don't, so it shows, if we want to show up on the bill, we know what's there, what it's about. That's all.
Okay. Okay, so before we go into action items, you want to give us your update for the last two weeks?
It's going to be, it's going to be brief. Now, I've, I've been, not that I haven't been working, I can tell you that, that's, that's not the issue. Just a couple of things, the meeting that we had last night in Mansfield, well, there were two meetings last night. There was the meeting that happened around 3:30 where we did a, a tour of the Route 140 corridor with, with the, with the representative, state representative, as well as members of his staff, as well as the members of the DOT staff and the District Five office who are in this area. So just to familiarize them with the, the areas of concern along Route 140 in Foxborough specifically.
Kevin, Kevin Whitefield is there.
Yes, and Kevin Whitefield, that's right, thank you for, for your mind, and Ginny attended as well. So to represent you and as board members. So there was, it was good, it was good meeting because it, sort of, first of all, there's a lot of new people in District Five, and the fact that they can, you know, they can exchange a name with a face, is always a good thing for us to be able to do that. And, and, and also to understand some of the issues directly. It's better for them to actually see it in person as to actually see it on a map sometimes. So it was actually, but it was a good, we had the district engineer out, and he was, it was great to have all those people here. I then headed from there over to the Mansfield where they had a DOT open house, DOT Capitol Open House, where they talked about all kinds of different projects that are, that are there, that are going on around in each of the various communities. that are there, that are going on around in each of the various communities. I was able to talk to Frank Topala, who was the new secretary, commissioner, secretary of transportation, and was able to familiarize, let him know that the things that we're dealing with here locally, including trains and road issues and the study, so that he was aware of those things, and just to make sure that he's putting a name with a face as well. So, again, it was very helpful from that perspective. Next thing I want to do is just, I want to congratulate Aaron Hyer, who was a winner of a state IT award for Foxborough, and that application was put forward by the school department with our full support for the work that he's done here in the community during the past year. It's been, stuff he's done has been nothing short of miraculous, in terms of pulling all the pieces together, and some of the things that he's done in the schools is just extraordinary, so certainly well-deserved, and I just unfortunately had a number of conflicts with Monday, so I couldn't get over there to see him win the award, but we're very, very pleased and happy for him and for the school department for sharing him with us. So, that's all I have for now, but there's a lot going on, just to let you know, but it's not stuff that we're able to share fully out at this point right now.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Mary Beth, do you have anything you?
Um, something very small, but important. We posted a position for a firefighter and paramedic. We had, one of our firefighters gave us notice, he was actually attending the State Police Academy. So he was one of our Black Hawk helicopter pilots, and decided to go from fire service to police. He resigned as of October 18th. We were very grateful for his service, he was a veteran. But, so we're posting that position, and if anyone has a firefighter/paramedic certification and is interested, the posting went up today, and it closes on November 20th.
All right, thank you. Okay, you think we can go through the 10 action items?
Yeah, I just have a clarification question before we get going on them. For Debbie, maybe. Number one is a gift of $325 in memory of Ted Inman, and number seven is also the same amount, is that?
Yeah.
Two separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I, I went back so many times, thinking I put something twice. There are two things in there.
Okay, yeah, I was just kind of flipping through and looking through, so, all right. All right, number one, council on aging, I make a motion, we accept a gift donation of $325 from multiple donors to benefit the senior center in memory of Ted Inman.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number two, friends of the flag poll, make a motion, we accept the gift donation of $3,525 from multiple donors.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Further discussion? Seen on, all those in favor?
Number three, MBCN slash Ancient Mariner, make a motion, we accept the early openings at 11:00 a.m. on all Sunday Patriot home games, starting at 1:00 p.m. on 11/8/15 and 12/20/15.
Second. Are those the only two?
The only two left.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Further discussion on the early openings? All those in favor? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you.
Number four, Veterans Turkey Fund, make a motion, we accept the gift donation of $100 from William and Christine Bellinger in Virginia Capola for the purchase of veterans' turkeys, with many thanks.
I'll second that.
I was going to say, before someone seconded, I kind of mentioned it at the beginning, last year when we did this, it was not through the town, it was completely separate.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I've been a little slow on working with the high school on it, but the money should go to the Touchdown Club, not through the town. And I think the last time, someone said, where do I send the checks? And I just said, send them to the selectman's office, so.
So we are not in a position to accept this?
Yeah, well, the good news is, which is, there's only two, which is Ginny. So Ginny, could I please ask you to rewrite it to?
Touchdown Club.
Touchdown Club?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then I'll reach out to Tina Bellinger, I think was the other one that made a donation.
Okay, I'll make a motion to rescind your motion, of course.
I'll second your motion to rescind my motion.
Thank you.[1374.56][1374.56][laughter] I get to get my act together and my paperwork here, so.
Checkmate. All right.
I'll take it, I'm collecting them all, yep.
Number five, make a motion, we accept the extension of hours of CBS Scene Restaurant on January 1st, 2016, to close at 2:00 a.m. instead of 1:00 a.m.
I'll second that, I just want to, as far as precedent from previous years, can anyone recall if we did this before?
We've done it before, we didn't do it last year because nobody requested it, but we have done it before in the past.
Okay, we didn't do it last year because we had any concerns?
Well, nobody requested.
No one requested, okay.
Yeah.
And I think the discussion we had, I remember a discussion, it was, you're staying open later, but not to serve alcohol until morning, it was food and taxis and all that stuff, right?
Well, I know last year, nobody requested it, I know in previous years, they had requested the later closing.
And they have to stop serving alcohol at 12:30.
So, same exact time as they are now.
As their license.
Yeah, so they're just keeping the establishment open an hour longer.
Can we make that stipulation?
It's part of their license already, right? That they can't serve alcohol past 12:30.
We told them when they called, every time they called, and then a letter goes out, actually, from Bill tomorrow, saying the Board of Selectmen approved this, and in that letter, it says, you must stop serving alcohol at 12:30.
So the motion was made and seconded, we discussed.
So the discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, 5-0.
Number six is also CBS Scene, make a motion, we accept the early openings at 11:00 a.m. on all Sunday Patriot home games, starting at 1:00 p.m., games being 11/8 and 12/20.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded by John. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
All right, number seven, council on aging, make the motion, we accept another gift donation of $325 from multiple donors to benefit the senior center in memory of Ted Inman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further acceptance? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Number eight, Bar Louie, make a motion, we accept the early openings at 11:00 a.m. on all Sunday Patriot home games, starting at 1:00 p.m. on 11/8 and 12/20, and any home playoff games on Sunday, starting at 1:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Early openings?
What about the people that we have granted early openings to, but not for, if there's any playoff games, do they have to request it again?
It's just because it's not part of their liquor license.
Yeah, okay.
In the years past, we've talked about trying to do this all on, you know, get some kind of coordination, so it's not all.
It would be easier to just, maybe Fox cares could work on that.
Yeah, you might, actually, you might want to mention that.
Have one person be the point, and just make it easier.
Just have a list, who wants it, who doesn't.
Well, it seems like everybody that has a license wants it, and they just dribble it to here.
Yeah, but unfortunately, if you don't ask for it, because you forget, and then your budding business has it, you're at a disadvantage.
Right, yeah.
Okay, no further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Chairman, we asked for number nine to be postponed. Only because they have to have the committee itself.
Their committee has to vote at the same time. Yeah, I did reach out to Candace Lowen, and she didn't think it was a problem to put on action item, but.
She called me again, and when she's calling her board to tell them that we were going to do this in an action item, one of her board members told her that it had to be a joint meeting, they had to vote in front of you, and you were there in front of them, it was a state statute, they found out.
Now we know.
But she said it's no big deal that it put off her, the 17th meeting, they're not in a dire rush.
Okay.
But they are a gap different year.
Okay, so number 10, personal wage board, make a motion, we approve the appointment of Joe Sheehan to the personal wage board, expiring May 1st, 2016.
I'll second that, and thank you, Joe, for volunteering.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion on Joe Sheehan? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any information, nothing that we need to deliberate on?
Motion that we close the November 3rd Board of Selectmen meeting.
And sorry, I will get out of your hair as soon as possible, but I just want to follow up a little bit on the memorandum of understanding that you're going to try to work out at the stadium. I would have done that earlier, but I don't like disrupting the actual meeting. But, so, yeah, so you're going to have selectmen and the, and town manager and council try to work out that memorandum, but the way I'm understanding it, it would only apply to this year, and then you'd hopefully drill into it, the Maytown meeting, the lease itself?
Correct.
So that memorandum would only be for the revenue for this year?
For this season.
For this season?
For this year, yeah, you're right.
For this season, you wouldn't be giving up your claim to that seat revenue, to that seat revenue in subsequent years hypothetically?
Correct, because that would require, yeah, you're right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that, since, you know, I think it's an issue that everyone in town is very interested in, so, you know, okay. Besides that, I think I got the 100% of your direction, so.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Are those your keys under there, or is that somebody else's?
Those are my keys.[1764.12][1764.12][laughter] I can't really drive my car without them, you know, I do naturally hotwire.
You sat there the whole night, how to take it over there.
You wouldn't want to walk out there and find out you don't have them, though.
Yeah, anybody who wants to seal that bucket of rush. It's not worth 20 years in the past.
All right, made and seconded.
Motion made, seconded. Close, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Things to sign?